Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:30. Let me call the meeting of the MRMAC Planning Board for February 17th, 2015 to order. Remind everyone who will speak tonight to sign in, make sure your microphones are turned on, and speak clearly so the folks at home can hear you. Let me announce that the next Planning Board meeting will be March 3rd, 7:30 PM, in this room. The next Bike and Pedestrian Subcommittee meeting will be February 24th, 7:30 PM, also in this room. Let me appoint Nelson to -- as a voting member tonight for our vacant full-member spot. And with that, Planning and Zoning Administrator's report. Tim?
I have nothing this evening.
Are there any questions by members of the Board for Staff? Hearing none. I will use the Chairman's prerogative to reorder the agenda and move the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendments, following the business on applications tonight, so that would fall after the auto fair realty application, which is item six. With that, it brings us to item four on our agenda, which is Old Blood Properties LLC and Joseph K. and Mary L. Kara, co-applicants and co-owners, review for acceptance in consideration of final approval of an application for a cluster subdivision proposing 72 cluster residential lots and four open space lots located at Old Blood Road in the R1 Residential District, tax map 5B, lot 1-1, 2, 3, 3-1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 231. The item is continued from December 16th, 2014, January 6th, 2015, January 20th, 2015, and probably a half a dozen other meetings that aren't on the list here. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
I think everybody's got a pretty good idea where we're at with the project, having just met back on January 20th. As you recall, at that meeting, the Board gave some direction relative to, at the time, a compromise intersection design at Madeline Bennett and Old Blood, which has now been reconsidered by both the School Board and the applicant. The applicant has presented the plans tonight with the intersection going back to the original design of the sweeping curve. The School District and School Board has presented some information in their packets relative to their prioritized list of options, of which they have six for the Board to consider. I think the primary thing I'd like to see happen tonight is that the Board discuss and give some direction to the applicant relative to the intersection design, as well as anything else regarding the project in whole, in the hopes that we can get to peer review and get to making some decisions on this in the upcoming months.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Ken? Don't forget to introduce yourself, even though you're practically one of us now. It's been here awhile.
I hate to screw you up. I had this great opening line, but...
Your microphone's not on, Ken.
Good evening. For the record, Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services, representing Old Blood Properties in this application. And obviously, with the fantastic memo that Tim has put together, and I guess I'm looking to have a record for a number of pages as we move forward. The last time we were here, I had been under the belief we had a fairly good consensus of the primary item of discussion for tonight, which is the Madeline Bennett Intersection. It turns out that what we thought isn't really agreeable to the School Board, even though we had been moving in a direction with revised plans. During our revisions, we paused at that particular sheet in our P9, which was -- shows the intersection with Madeline Bennett and the school entrance. We submitted anyways, so that we could get as many follow-up town comments as we could submitted, so we could better understand them, the handful that have become outstanding, start working on addressing them, and hopefully, we thought we'd have the School Board endorse some level of design. What you now know, Chair Otega provided a letter stating the School Board's position, and I understand that they recognize that the decision ultimately does rest solely in your hands. The directive is yours. At this point, I guess that's the first item that I feel we need to touch on tonight. Then I have a handful of others, but it's really paramount, obviously, for us to get direction on that. What we did submit is the curve design. It was paused where we didn't include signage or signals, and it could be used for the straight curve with the school entrance with a stop. It could be used in that same fashion with the traffic officer. It could be used in that same fashion with blinking signals that we discussed. That's the alignment that we have currently in our design, and it could actually handle all three of those quote-unquote "options." But I guess I'll leave it to the Board if you would like to share your thoughts at this point. I don't want to go on with any presentation until I get some level of feedback from the Board.
Thank you for that, Ken. Is comparing what you've proposed to the Board tonight as a plan to the six options that the school has proposed, which of their options corresponds to what you proposed? Is it five or six?
The last time we were here with the signals, that would be their option number five.
Okay.
What you see on the screen or in the plan set is actually item number -- or option number six, which could be modified for their item number five or four.
Okay.
Once again, we paused. Once we heard that there was what we thought was a consensus, that the Board as a whole, the School Board as a whole, once we found out that there was dissension and a general dislike of the signal option, we paused, and once again, we submitted the plan, just so we can collect as many of the unrelated comments through community staff, DPW, town departments, et cetera.
What's the applicant's or your firm's opinion of the T-intersection that they proposed for option two?
Not favorable.
What's good or bad about it?
As I've said, and I believe I've been consistent on this, the best engineering design is the curve, the public road as a curve, the school access as a driveway with a stop condition. The T is opposite of that. The T would suggest that the main traffic flow is the school, which save for a half an hour in the afternoons during school is the case, except for that time period. It's not the main flow of traffic.
Okay.
And therefore, to me, that's backwards. From an engineering standpoint, that's backwards.
Now, the traffic engineer that you guys retained at the School Board's request disagrees with that.
I wouldn't characterize that he disagrees with that. The purpose and the intent of the coordination with Steve Pernah, who is the traffic engineer, was to understand, most importantly, if a rotary was a necessary or reasonable approach. That was his first and foremost. He didn't feel satisfied-
Well, I'm reading from the memo. It says, "We believe the predominant travel pattern of the subject intersection will remain to be between the school driveway and Madeline Bennett Lane when the school's in operation 180 each year. This suggests that the through movements, two from the school should be given priority over the traffic movements from the subdivision."
With all due respect to Mr. Pernah, in our discussions, he did not feel he could stop at an opinion that was solely or specifically regards to the rotary or roundabout.
Yeah, he didn't give you an up or down on what you offered him. He picked a third choice.
He picked maybe the 14th or 15th choice.
That's probably a better way to characterize it.
However, I honestly can say that he did not have an opportunity to meet with me to discuss the aspects, or the, quite frankly, the past year's worth of back and forth between the Board, the School Board, town departments, et cetera. And if I was to characterize his understanding of the overall design aspects and approach, he might have understood 15 to 20% of what's involved in this particular issue. And he threw out an option that he felt could be considered.
Well, yeah, I know that he did that, but I was just trying to get to the more elementary point, which is that he views the priority traffic being the school from an engineering design standpoint. In your opinion is that it's the opposite of that, that the priority traffics for the subdivision.
I would say that we spent nearly a year on this particular issue, and I received billing from him, and I don't know that he spent more than 15 hours, 20 at the most.
Ken, can I just jump you a little bit? You just said 30 minutes in the afternoon. That isn't the case. It's not only 30 minutes in the afternoon, it's also in the morning. You've got the same problem. It's not as quite as concentrated, but you've still got the same situation of buses coming in, depositing students, and then having to high-tail it down to the high school to unload them, and then do the second half of the thing, which is picking up the younger kids for the elementary and upper elementary schools. And the thing that nobody really -- and I -- everybody knows, I drive a school bus, not in this town, but I have driven it. I drove a school bus in this town for three years. And the thing that nobody seems to put together is there's a tight configuration. Those buses aren't sitting around drinking coffee. They -- from the moment they leave, it's about half past 6:00 in the morning. They've got to pick up the high school and middle school students, deposit them appropriately, and then go out and get the rest. And if you start holding things up, I mean, the afternoon's the same, and you'll say, "Well, it doesn't matter. Mommy can wait for the kid to come home." But if you hold up the morning situation, you're not going to get schools starting at 7:30. I mean, the principles that the school bus has to work to is the high school wants to start classes at 7:15, and the middle school wants to start at 7:30. Now, if you start holding up those start times because the buses cannot get out of the middle school to get down to the high school, you really are going to upset an apple cart. Now, I'm not saying I'm against a curve, but I still think somewhere in the system, and I've got a plan myself, you've got to have it so that the buses get priority during those two periods. There's about 45 minutes each in the morning and 45 minutes in the afternoon. The buses have got to get priority. And the point I tried to make now is if you look at all the other schools in this town, high school, MES, MUES, Thornton's Ferry, and Reed's Ferry, there are auxiliary policemen, and I use the word, they don't mean that derogatorily, I mean, very good competent individuals who the police authorize, although I believe the School Board pays for, to get those buses out. I can assure you that if you didn't have that person, for example, at Thornton's Ferry, the situation would be just as bad as it's going to be in the middle school, the way you've got it. The school is definitely the offshoot on a reasonably main road, probably with as much or more traffic than you're going to get out on Old Blood Road. And if there wasn't that nice lady police auxiliary stood there, you wouldn't get the students in and out safely. And as for on Babu'sik Lake Road, I mean, the gentleman there is fantastic, and it's up to him, and he controls it. And you've also got to remember, there are a lot of other controls. Do you all know, for example, that nobody is allowed to go back down McKelvin -- McKelwin in between the hours when the buses are trying to get up? So, I mean, there are a lot more restrictions on everybody in this town as far as getting -- giving priority to school buses going in and out. And on the way you've got it, there are no priorities for the school buses. They're the, you know, after the Lord Mayor Show. And I mean, I can show you some facts and figures, and I've got a board that makes the point. You won't get the buses out because primarily, on your road, on your sweeping curve, and I accept it from an engineering point, it's the best answer, because people do not indicate their intentions, the poor damn bus driver is going to be -- all of them are getting stuck at that stop sign, not knowing what to do. And I'll explain to that a bit later if you want me to.
No, we've been over that point and similar points.
Yeah, but you haven't crossed -- you haven't come up with the answer.
Well-
We're still at this onpass, which is why you and the -- the School Board and, if you like, everybody else is in -- the School Board knows the problem. It wants to get its children out or in in the morning and out in the afternoon, and it -- all it's concerned about, which is why item six, which I think is theirs, they do not approve the design, which is the design you're bringing up today. They cannot approve it. There's got to be -- I mean, I'll happy with the design, provided there's a traffic officer there.
Actually, with all due respect, the design that we were working on, that we submitted, was the design that was the concurrence on our January 16th meeting with them. However, just prior to completing the plans for submissions, we did not, we held back on the signals because we heard that they did not like that.
And I agree with them. I think the signals were a bad idea, unless you just put standard flashing signals, like you have at exit eight, coming off the turnpike, where the priority goes for Southwood Drive rather than the exit eight ramp, because there's a bus park.
So, that was the last --
Yeah.
We had a -- we had an understanding, a consensus, so-
I understand.
We stopped at that particular point before we finished the plans unnecessarily, which it turns out was a smart idea.
Hmm.
So, now, having learned the order of options from the School Board, we're here to receive some direction of what would you like us to do.
When we -- I don't have anything close to the expertise that Alistair has driving a school bus and how much time it needs to pull out in there, but just coming back to what I think I can rely on, which is the stuff that the traffic engineer put in his report, and I guess this is data that was collected by our DPW, the peak hour traffic from the school in the morning is almost 400, actually, its average is 400. It's sometimes over 400, peak trips per hour. 225, give or take, in the afternoon, peak trips per hour that have got to get in and out of that school. And the subdivision's highest peak hour traffic is like 71 cars an hour, easily managed with a stop sign. 400 cars going through a stop sign in an hour, I think, is a lot to try to manage and potentially a big snarl in traffic, whereas 71 cars per hour coming out of a subdivision hitting a stop sign, which is exactly what they'll do at Wilson Hill Road and Old Blood Road, is absolutely manageable. It's insignificant. It works like a charm. Every time it's been tried. My neighborhood, half the neighborhoods we live on, have about that number of houses. You get to the end, there's a stop sign. You wait a second, you go. But 400 people trying to get into or out of a school in the morning, and 225 in an hour in the afternoon for those days a week, I think, is a very significant difference in that process. Now, I understand that the proposal with the curve can have this light configuration that flashes yellow and red in different directions, and maybe that's switchable, and the School Board doesn't love that, and that sort of raises some confusion about whether that's the right way to go or the wrong way to go. One of the things that I've heard from discussions in the community between meetings is that a yellow flashing light that alternates to become a red flashing light at certain times actually is more of a traffic obstruction and a hazard than an aid, because people aren't expecting it to be flashing the wrong color when they arrive at it. If they're used to going through there on yellow, and now it's red, they probably will cruise right through it, because they're not tuned in to the fact that it's doing something a little different. So, from what I understand, that's not a way to go, and I guess that the person who was suggesting that to me said that came from Ashtoe. I don't know. Not my area. But if the exact same intersection that's going to happen on Old Blood Road and Wilson Hill Road existed on Madeline Bennett Road and Old Blood Road, which is, you meet at a stop sign from the community, is put there, it'll clearly work. It'll clearly work for the buses. It'll clearly work for the neighborhood. It's not going to have people stacked up in the neighborhood trying to figure out what to do. Why -- and there may be some reasons you haven't shared with us as to why that isn't, and I'm trying to find out what it is that you don't like about that intersection that sort of helps the Board make a decision not to go in that direction.
I find it hard to add to my discussions over the past year, quite frankly. So, I'm at the mercy of the Board.
Are the Board members with questions?
Yeah, I don't understand your answer, Ken. I thought your configuration would allow -- the configuration you proposed would allow for a stop sign on Old Blood Road.
Well, I've never said that it couldn't.
Yeah.
Certainly it can, yes. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Your objection, then, to it wouldn't change your configuration of building. It would just be -- your objection is that the main road and a driveway kind of thing.
I guess, let me back up for a moment. Are you suggesting that the curve stay in place but place a stop sign coming from the subdivision towards the school?
That's what I-
Or are you saying a T, because if I'm not mistaken, the discussion relative to Mr. Pernah's suggestion was not necessarily the curve, but a T?
He did propose a T. I haven't seen a proposal that had a curve with a stop sign from Chestnut Hill subdivision and no traffic controls into or out of the school. But I did see in Mr. Pernah's discussion that doing that as you entered the school, and regardless of whether we had yellow lights or not, you've got, going down Madeline Bennett Road, you're going to curve to the left and curve back to the right to stay going into the school in order to navigate into the school.
If we were to put a stop sign in this location, stopping the subdivision traffic as they came down the hill towards the school, then there would be no need for this to be a curve.
Build it as a T.
Because if you're relying on Steve Pernah's comments, then there would be a stop sign here, but free flow in this direction to and from the school, out towards Babu'sik Lake Road, per his sketch that's in his letter. So, that can be done. We could design it and construct it in that fashion, if that's what the Board directed us to do.
And you'd have to do that, because you can't stop somebody from taking a left and going towards the subdivision as they approach the school. If you don't have a stop sign there, stopping them from taking that leap all the way through, you're dead.
Well, if it's a T intersection-
If buses can't get out.
If it's a T intersection in that fashion, like-
So, you would have to do a T intersection and make that be a left-hand turn.
Like the sketch in Steve Pernah's letter, then it would be the T intersection similar to what he has in a sketch with the stop sign leaving the subdivision, but that would be the only stop sign control. Then the question is, if that's what the Board would like, he also, being Mr. Pernah, suggested a new cul-de-sac on school property, taking up this area. Is that also?
Yeah, that's part of what he's proposed, and since that was the School Board's second choice in their options, I assume that they're willing to see that happen on their property.
I don't think so, Mr. Jim. I think they've objected to this.
But it might just sort of help people see what I think Mr. Pernah was trying to do, if I may borrow Steve's. Can I just take yours down?
Certainly, man.
I think this is what Mr. Pernah had in mind. This is only Alistair's.
All right, Alistair, you got to talk with the microphone and-
Yeah, I'm not talking to him. I'm just going to show it. I think... There's your T.
Yep, more or less. I think he wants to put a cul-de-sac or a turnaround area a little bit towards the school building, which is-
Hey, I'm not trying to be a traffic engineer. I'm not -- but I just put a picture that we could look at.
No, fair enough. The school has said that they want a T intersection with a stop sign at Old Blood Road, as per the Steven Pernah Traffic Study of January 15th, 2015, which is this thing I've been reading from. And the drawing that Pernah put in there has that cul-de-sac drawn onto the school's property. And since that's what they've asked for, I assume that means that they're willing to have that cul-de-sac on the school's property.
I thought I had the sketch more readily available, but apparently I don't.
I have it on this packet.
No, it's not.
The Steve Pernah's one?
Yeah.
I brought mine.
Yeah, I don't have mine.
I didn't bring mine.
Pass it that way, we'll pass it the other way.
I do remember that, but I thought that that was unacceptable to the school, to put the cul-de-sac in there on their property.
What's the purpose of the cul-de-sac? If you need to be able to get a plow truck to go turn around, go down Madeline Bennett Road and turn around rather than-
Some wetland issues and things like that.
I think perhaps, Mr. Jim, this might be a good time to have Kyle come up and-
Yeah.
Talk about the T intersection versus the curve.
Close to it, I think. Not quite there. On the curve one that you're proposing, the three choices with the curve are either the traffic goes straight through to, unimpeded to the subdivision in both directions, and there's a stop sign at the school. And that's the issue, I think, that the school and Alistair look at as item six-
Correct.
And not terribly workable, from their viewpoint. Obviously, it's not -- they're not the only person with an oar in the water. The second choice is to do the curve with the yellow and red flashing light situation, where either it's timed or somebody controls the light, switching from yellow in one direction to yellow in the other direction, to allow the buses to free flow at the right time. And otherwise, it would be a stop condition for them. And the issue with that one is that the schools don't want to have a control over it, but perhaps it could be timed to be from, you know, 7:30 to 8:30 or something.
Indeed, it could. We talked to the manufacturer.
Okay. So, timing it may be a way to have them have that control without the time. Or the third option is that there's the sweeping curve, and the stop sign is there at the school's entrance, but then a policeman is available for the morning and night to let the buses come and go the way they are at the other school.
Yes, so that's a-
So, there's really no option there. It's four and six are identical. You just decide whether or not you're going to put a police officer there to assist with traffic flow during those times.
Yes.
But they're identical options.
From a physical standpoint, they're identical, except for whether you'd have a police officer standpoint there.
But that's what we have at every other school in town right now, so...
We do, as a matter of the consequence of the way the road lays out, I don't think that that's a good practice. I don't think that -- I don't look at that as being a good design.
I don't imagine any other place we could do otherwise. I mean, you look at the high school, it's a very long distance to that intersection, and there's still a police officer there.
Oh, I don't think that we have a choice with the schools that we have already, but I'm thinking that the schools that require police officers wouldn't have police officers if they were designed right. That's my viewpoint.
So, to summarize, the current design that we had, once again, which was a couple of weeks back, the alignment of the curve in the school driveway are identical for options from the School Board, numbered options, four, five, or six. This alignment works with any of them. It's just a matter of the signage and/or signals and/or traffic officer.
Okay. I got you. I hate to keep harping on the T intersection from Pernah, but it doesn't require any of those choices. And no police officer, no flashing lights, nobody controlling them, nobody timing them. It just stop, done. Road design.
And if that's what the Board would like, then that's what we'll do.
I think that our Department of Public Works probably disagrees with my view of it, so Kyle, you got a minute to come tell me how I'm wrong? Phrase that differently, please. No, I'm not this -- I'm not this kind of engineer. This is not my area.
Good evening, and for the record, I'll never tell you you're wrong, but-
Thanks, Kyle.
My name is Kyle Fox. I'm the Town Engineer with the MRMAC Department of Public Works. I guess I'll try and answer some of the comments and questions I heard. To kick things off, I'll put it out there that I concur with the engineers at Meridian, that the curve design in this location is the preferred option. It's the optimal option from the many options that have been presented, both to you folks and to town staff, police, fire, Public Works, and to the school. It's been a long process, as you know. The -- from the outset, we have recognized the need for a safe intersection. The school hasn't always thought that we were in that frame of mind, but I can assure you, we were. And what's nice about the curved intersection is it's a natural traffic calming device, much like the roundabout would be. The -- one of the great things about roundabouts is the -- they're specifically designed, they have that island on the approach to the roundabout that has kind of a scooped-out direction, and the sole purpose of that is to slow traffic down to about 15 to 20 miles an hour. The curve as presented here is a 20 mile an hour curve, so it's a natural traffic calming device. That accompanied by the school flashing signs will -- which would be 20 miles- That accompanied by the school flashing signs will, which would be twenty mile an hour signs, just like the area on Babusik and the area out on Camp Sergeant. By code, the town council can put that as a statutory speed limit during school hours. So all of that leads to slowing traffic down, which makes it a safe intersection. One of the things I really dislike about the, the T intersection, and Ken kind of alluded to it, is it changes the traffic flow, whether in reality or not, it changes the traffic flow in people's perception. Because the, if you put a stop sign on Old Blood Road but have it free flow on coming out of the school, then, and this comes into play with the safety aspect, if you've got a straight line into the school, there's nothing to prevent someone going fifty miles an hour into that driveway. Because they've got the right-of-way and there's nothing holding them back. And as we've all seen on all of our roads, we get hundreds of calls a year from people saying, people drive too fast on our roads. And what's to say they won't do the same here? The only thing that slows people down is police enforcement, if the police are actually out there, or the geometry of the road. That's the only thing that's consistent in controlling speeds.
But nobody goes fifty miles an hour on school mornings right here.
Sure that, well, if, what was interesting, when NRPC did the traffic counts for us before the winter started, if you look at those sheets, there were people doing fifty miles an hour on Madeline Bennett.
On which report?
In the, the speed devils. Did that get sent to the planning board?
If it did, I didn't get it.
In the, in the traffic counts that NRPC did for us, they, they, they put out speed loops too, so they could tell how fast the traffic was going. There wasn't a lot of cars, but there were cars going over forty and a couple going over fifty. So to say they won't do it is incorrect.
But Kyle, I could make exactly the same argument with your curve. If you, in a free society with no other constraint, I'd go around that curve a damn sight faster than twenty mile an hour. And I think most people, I mean, majority of people aren't observing the twenty mile an hour speed limit out here.
Except when the yellow lights are on and-
Except the yellow lights.
Well, it's only twenty miles an hour when the yellow lights are on.
I know, but they don't even observing thirty when the yellow lights are off. Anyway, I'm just, I'm telling you, if you, if you think that curve will make me go only get around that curve at twenty mile an hour, I disagree with you.
Okay. With respect to the Steven Pernod memo, I just, I've been hearing a lot of talk about that. We went through, through this point by point. Really, he made five points. The first point was the traffic count. His conclusion was that because the school had eleven hundred vehicles per day and the projected subdivision would have seven hundred sixty trips per day, that the school would be the predominant, or should be the predominant movement. If you take the seven hundred sixty trips times a hundred, or, I'm sorry, if you take the eleven hundred trips from the school times a hundred eighty days versus the seven hundred sixty trips times three hundred sixty-five days, the road is the predominant movement by a hundred thousand vehicles over the course of a year.
Well, no, I don't think you did the math right. Seven sixty is split in two directions. It goes half to Madeline Bennett and half to Wilson Hill, or it could, and that's what he's got in here. Seven sixty per day, which will be split between Madeline Bennett and Old Blood Road. Now, it may not be a fifty-fifty split, and certainly at the peak traffic, it's gonna be Wilson Hill heavy because everybody in this neighborhood's gonna be used to it. And they're gonna say, I ain't going towards that school because there's a whole bunch of buses over there. Let me go over here to Wilson Hill Road. I'll get out easily. But just doing the math, some number of seven sixty is going in the other direction. So you take that, I don't, half is not gonna be the right number, but if you took it in half and multiplied it by three, it's sixty-five, you don't end up with more than you'd get from eleven hundred times a hundred and eighty.
I appreciate your comment and I will use that soon. In, in point three, Mr. Pernod suggested that a roundabout configuration was not appropriate. Point four, he said a three-legged T intersection with a single lane approach will have sufficient capacity with both configurations shown below, one of which is the curve, one is which is the three-leg. And the key point in that, and one of the key points I wanted to drive home tonight is when designing roads, you know, there's very specific rules that we follow, chiefly the Astor Design Guides and the MUTCD. And the quantity of traffic that's going to be seen at this intersection does not meet any warrants for stop signs or yield signs. So putting any stop sign is going over and above what's warranted for the intersection.
We have stop signs all over town inside residential neighborhoods a lot smaller than this, don't we?
We do. We do.
We're not counting car counts there. We're counting the fact that two roads intersect each other, right?
That's right. And I'm not saying a stop sign at the school driveway wouldn't be appropriate. What I'm saying is that it's not warranted, so to start adding traffic control needs to be thought of carefully.
I guess I'm confused by that, and I get the idea that warrants come from some set of standards that are published and it's different than sort of what's appropriate or what other adjective we might use on that. But I guess from a planning standpoint, a planning board standpoint, we're not limited to just what's warranted if the warrants don't take into account the fact that you've got two intersection, two intersecting roads and somebody has got a yield to the other one.
Right. With respect to the comparison to the other schools, I would suggest that all of the three other school areas mentioned, Reed's Ferry, Thornton's Ferry, and the High School Master Cola complex are all on collector roads and main roads, major arterial roads. The traffic on, that's gonna be seen on this road won't come anywhere approaching either the speed or the volume in any of those configurations. And just to correct one point, there is no traffic officer at the Reed's Ferry school.
But not then, Camp Sergeant isn't a collector road either.
It is. Of course it is.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. You've got Continental Boulevard. It's just a backwater road. I mean, let's face it, you've got signs saying, no trucks between this time and that time, so it's not a collector road.
It, it is a collector road. It distributes traffic out to Amherst Road and out to Continental Boulevard.
I think I agree with Kyle on that. On the Reed's Ferry Elementary School, where's the traffic? Is it at Pearson Road or is it somewhere inside the school?
The stop sign is at the end of Lyons Road, which intersects with-
And that's where the police officer is?
No, there is no police officer.
There isn't a police officer in that. There used to be.
Thornton's.
The Thornton's Ferry is right on the, right on the street where the school street, Camp Sergeant, and there's a funny little road going off the other way.
Okay, and that's where the police officer is?
Yes.
Yeah, at Thornton's Ferry and at the Master Cola complex.
Why does Reed's work?
Traffic volumes.
And so again, you've got a similar situation, right?
And Reed's and Thornton's are almost identical schools. They're actually on the same floor plan, same architectural design.
But you're talking about a road, basically you're talking about the two different levels of service for those roads. And so you can come out of Reed's, all those buses can come out unencumbered to make that left and go wherever they want, right? There's, but there is a stop, so they gotta stop, make the turn, but there's not enough traffic going the other way that would delay it and cause the mayhem that Alistair's talking about, but that currently exists, right?
Correct.
But there's a difference.
And there's no issues with that intersection.
But the difference is that's an elementary school, so therefore it's at the end of the morning run and it's the end of the evening run. The difference is that the middle school is in the mid-middle. Because, I mean, if a bus is late getting out of Reed's Ferry, it doesn't really matter. The driver gets an extra quarter of an hour. If the bus, if the driver's quarter of an hour late coming out of the middle school, he screwed up, screwed up the rest of them. That's the difference. If it wasn't the middle school, I wouldn't be jumping up and down. If it was a primary school, I wouldn't be nearly so worried because it doesn't matter. The bus can run a bit late, but of course, you still have all the grannies ringing up, where's Little Willie? But the problem is if you screw up the middle school-
But they're not running late. Reed's Ferry is not running late.
Yeah, but it doesn't, you don't know that.
Because there's no, there's no delay at that intersection.
How do you know that?
We have no reports of that. We have no issue with that.
And it doesn't have a police officer there directing the traffic, so that we'd see it now.
It functions with some level of acceptable service that the town has not resolved or had to resolve with a police officer. We're seeing the same level of service or similar, similar traffic patterns at this middle school. And the only thing that I'm hearing is that it's a timing thing that falls in the course of the day, but I don't understand why that would warrant all of these controls when it still comes back to interruptions due to crossing traffic or intersections, right? I mean, that's the issue. Is there gonna be a car coming down that road that's gonna make that bus stop-
Yes.
Longer than it needs to to get out?
It's not one bus. There's eighteen of them.
Right, and that's the same scenario with Reed's Ferry. They don't have that issue.
But at Thornton's Ferry, they do.
Right, and I would, I would think so.
Different road.
Different road, much, a lot higher level of service, and Kyle just testified, it's, it's a collector road.
Well, so is Pearson.
Doesn't have the traffic.
But Madeline's not even close to either of those.
And I'm glad we got to that point because that is the key point that I wanted to make. There's really two issues here and I hope you as a board will differentiate between the two issues. One issue is road design. The second issue is bus timing, and they shouldn't be intermixed. The bus timing can be taken care of with a number of other solutions, but the road configuration should stand on its own. And I felt that from the get-go. The bus timing, just to speak to that for a moment, Mr. Milnes has stated to me prior, so I feel comfortable saying this, he doesn't agree with the bus study that the school department and public works folks did this past, past summer. But we, for people who don't know, we did a little test run and we did a bus timing trial. The first day, we noted on a sheet the time that every bus passed us at Madeline Bennett and the time that it got to Indian Rock Road, which is on Babusik Lake, on their way to the high school, and at the high school itself. And then the following day, actually the following, that was on a Tuesday. The following Tuesday, we came back and did the same thing, only this time we put a stop sign at the cul-de-sac of Madeline Bennett. The school bus coordinator made every single bus stop for five seconds. He did the counting himself. Every bus had to stop five seconds. He did the five, four, three, two, one, then he released the buses. And we checked the timing at the same three locations. And in the end, what we found is the maximum delay we could, we could account for was five minutes. The interesting thing was the delay in buses get, the first bus getting to the cul-de-sac had the same five minutes. So there's as much delay in the time the buses even leave the school as would, at worst case, be presented in the stop sign being at the driveway. Now, what solutions could be done to alleviate any bus slowing that did happen? Because it is a big concern, as the school made clear at our Highway Safety Committee meeting and at other venues. You start delaying buses. They do all go to the high school and do pickups there. If the delays were significant, there could be changes in bell times, issues with teacher contracts. It is a big deal if it were to be an issue. Ways that that could be handled, first and foremost, is through the traffic signal that's at the intersection of Madeline Bennett and Babusik. We can, we can coordinate that signal to give more green time to the buses coming out of Madeline Bennett in the afternoons. That can easily happen if need be. As it is today, the, there's, there's two waves of buses that come out of the, of the middle school in the afternoon. The one is longer than the other, and I apologize for not recalling which is which. The longer wave of buses actually can't make it through the green, all in one caterpillar, as I've heard it called. So they end up being stopped at the red light now. So there's another point of delay that's inherently built in that could easily be remedied through timing of the traffic signal. If it was to such a point that it was a problem beyond what could be handled with the traffic signal, then perhaps a uniformed officer of some sort could be put into the intersection to solve the problem. But the road geometry should not be designed based on a perceived problem. I don't believe it will be a problem based on the data I've collected. And if it is, we're, Public Works is prepared to come up with a remedied solution. Who would pay for the officer? The school graciously offered to let the town council pay for it. I'll let the two higher boards in town resolve that if it came to it, but, but that's my feelings on the subject and-
Mr. Jim, can I just make some refute what you just said, Carl? And I'll take a microphone to make a point.
Take a mic too.
Yeah, I'll take my mobile. And this is why, Alistair.
Alistair.
And this is why, with great respect to you, Carl, and I understand what you're saying about geometry, and I'm not trying to do the geometry. I'm just trying to explain a few facts. If you look at a school bus stopped at this point here, it takes seven seconds for that school bus to get from here to it running down here. From a dead stop with a motivated driver, it'll take seven seconds. I can, I promise you that's why the time did not roll. And the big problem is that at this point, assuming a car is doing twenty mile an hour, in that seven seconds, if the bus hasn't cleared that, then the car's gonna hit it. And the bus drivers know that. They know that they look, they're looking for about a two hundred to two hundred and fifteen foot gap before they dare come out. And I do this every day, and so do my colleagues. We know we cannot take a risk if we know we're gonna cause a problem. So this is the problem. Once a car reaches that point, we wanna know what it's gonna do. Now, if you wanna believe that a hundred percent of the drivers coming up this way are gonna indicate where they're going, then you're mad. They won't do it. Even, if I would point out to you, that even on the stakes rules, the bus doesn't, the car doesn't have to signal its intentions if you read the driver's manual, to that point, at which point there's, a collision is inevitable. And this is the real issue. The bus needs clear time. And I still say that less than fifty percent of the people here at that point, a hundred yards from, a hundred feet from the turning, are gonna give you an indication of what they're gonna do. They're gonna sweep around here, and if they haven't signaled by there, the bus driver's gotta assume, assume that they're going around the corner. And that's why, with respect to the survey that Kyle and his colleagues did with the five-second delay, it's irrelevant. The fact is, the bus driver dare not move on, once a car gets to that point unless the car is signaling its intention. And I go through a similar junction every day on Silver Lake Road in South Merrimack, and I can sit there for minutes because people don't use those funny little stalks that are attached to the engine.
Alistair, thank you for explaining that, because I, before you did that, I was missing a piece of the point. And I thought that the traffic coming to and from Chestnut Hill was the problem, and it isn't. It's the traffic that's gonna be trying to get into the school while the buses are trying to get out of the school, but them not indicating what they're doing. So you don't know whether they're gonna go into the school and not interfere with the bus at all or try to go to Chestnut Hill with no stop or signalization, in which case the bus has gotta sit there and wait till that decision's made, which could be more than five seconds, wouldn't it?
Well, I'll answer that in two parts. I guess the first part I would say is that, you know, in, the buses all over this town make left-hand turns at stop signs every day in non-school zones, which means thirty miles an hour or higher speed limits. And I don't believe we've had any accidents in, in my time in Merrimack, which is nine years between cars and school buses from a left-hand turn. So, so by that rationale, we should be having accidents all the time. With respect to, to the timing delays, the, going back to the study in that there was between zero and five minutes net result, the primary reason for that, again, is the stoplight at Babusik. It doesn't matter how quick they get through the cul-de-sac or what that exists today or the intersection as, whatever configuration it'll be, all the buses have to stop at that stoplight. And that's the big queuing point, and they all stack up together, and then they all leave together. And- And that's the big queuing point, and they all stack up together, and then they all leave together. And and.
Well, it is under the test that you've done. But re- remember that the school's peak hour traffic, when these buses are coming and going, is somewhere between two twenty-five and four hundred trips per hour. So, well, yeah, they get around town and they make left turns at other intersections. One that's got that much traffic right at the instant where they've gotta get clear of it, I think, is a little unique. I don't know of another intersection where a bus is making a left turn unsignaled with that much traffic going on.
Well, no, there there's no question, this is a unique situation. And and as I said, you know, we we need to 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 make sure the buses can get where they need to go. And if it, you know, but but again, you don't let the perceived issue of buses drive the design of the roadway. If if after this is built, there's an issue, then you address the issue. There's a lot of smart people in this town. We we can address issues. But but to design based on a perceived problem is it's not proper engineering, it's it's not proper economics.
Well, but if you design, if you go with the curve, then it has a problem. Your solutions are to have a police officer there or do the light situation that we talked about before. And I'm sure that engineers can come up with another handful of ways to do it. All of those are very difficult to manage economically. Somebody's gotta pay for a a police officer to be there and train them and take responsibility for them. And although it's only a few hours, it's a forever expense going forward. Or this light situation, which is an expensive piece of equipment. How is that favorable to putting the T intersection with a stop sign and just being done with it? You know you won't have a problem with it there. I mean, or or is there? Tell me if there's something about the T intersection that causes a problem.
Again, I think the T intersection leads to cars traveling at a higher rate of speed than they should into that driveway.
If I may.
If I may.
Please.
Help yourself. Do you want some more pins, Ken?
I hope not, Alistair. Just to clarify, and Chairman Best actually is the one that recognized this right off. If if you take a look at the concern of a bus stop or coming out of the school and waiting for a car to make an indication, a signal, wheel turning motion, or what have you, to take a left turn before they can come out, well, it actually, as Chairman Best pointed out, is there's more danger for a car heading towards the school on Madeline Bennett in a straight configuration, because that person could be traveling at a higher rate of speed heading in towards the school. And that bus driver will not know until the very last minute when this wheel stays straight heading into the school, and therefore.
Now, unless there's a turning lane or something in the middle there.
The problem you described, quite frankly, is actually worse with this T.
Sorry, I disagree, Ken, because because the main road, effectively, if I use that terrible term, is ahead. Most people making a left turn at a T will actually use their signaling device. People going straight ahead but actually going slightly to the right, don't. I mean, I'm just telling you, that's, I I'll give you that for fact.
And I was gonna say something to the extent of the the curved road, just just in reference. Everybody's turning their wheels slightly, cause the road's curved, so no one's gonna turn their wheels that much more than the next person coming into the curved configuration. At a point where the bus will be.
Lynn, you have a comment?
Can I back this up just a little bit? If the school were not there, and we were talking about this subdivision, and how we would approve this subdivision, and what we would do with traffic, we would have somebody coming in from Babusick Lake Road at, maybe we'd have a traffic light there, maybe, we probably wouldn't. You would come in that drive, which is the Old Blood Road, and come in and continue to that subdivision, and there would be no stop signs, there would be no signaling, there would be no, nothing there. And that subdivision would continue and would be approved as it is. So we are saying now, that subdivision exists, the road exists as it is, and now the school wants to build a school. And that school now has to come out and have their driveway intersect with Old Blood Road. And what would we do? I think we would have a stop sign at Madeline Bennett and Old Blood, and the school buses would stop at Old Blood and proceed through and continue, and and whatever happens at Babusick Lake is is irrelevant to the subdivision. And I think we are looking at something different than, I I think we're we're flipping things here. And I can under- I've driven a school bus in this town as well. And so I can make the same judgments that you can make, Alistair. But I think, from a planning board perspective, we're looking at a town road, albeit maybe class six, class five, whatever it was. There is a town road coming from Babusick, going and continuing through Old Blood over to Wilson Hill. And that's a town road. I think the school has assumed or presumed that that is their driveway, and it isn't. Their driveway stops at the Old Blood Road intersection. And I think we oughta be looking at it from that perspective.
I um, I I agree with your perspective that had these projects appeared in reverse order where the subdivision was here first, the school would be the one coming before us and having to figure out how to make their site work based on the conditions that existed when they put their foot on the ground. But all applications are that way. I mean, whoever's here first sort of takes advantage of that situation when they're here. And whoever's second adapts to what was there before them.
But it's still a town road.
It it, no question, but.
It's not a school road.
If if we're making that distinction, though, Old Blood Road goes a lot further, straight through. I mean, it doesn't stop at Madeline Bennett. It is a class six road now. It's, part of it's gonna be upgraded to a class five road, um, in order to be paved and town-maintained. But the rest of it continues to exist. Um, and Madeline Bennett Road meets it either at a at a T or a cross. At a little funny curve here, if we um, do the curve thing. But um, that Madeline Bennett is a town road and Old Blood Road is a town road and the school is private property. Practically every stoplight in town is at the driveway of private property. At Budweiser and Colesman, at the Sh- two of the Shaws, or the the old one that's gonna be a go-kart and the one in the north. At at Premium Outlets Boulevard, at um, the thing all the way down in the south, Horseshoe Pond or whatever that's called. There's um, we have traffic controls at private drives all over the place. That gives priorities to people that wanna go in and out of Budweiser, or in and out of Shaws, or in and out of the outlets. To me, isn't the deciding factor is to say which is which. The deciding factor is which one of these is gonna work day to day as people try to cross through this intersection. Because if people are stuck in traffic and the buses don't get through, nobody will be satisfied with the explanation that says, oh, well, this was a town road and that wasn't. So that's the way the the thing works out.
There there's an important distinction with all those other intersections you've mentioned, though, is they all met warrants for signalization.
Oh, uh, whi- which is why we're not putting a red light here. But we're talking about whether there's enough traffic there to warrant having, you know, a situation. Now, I wanna know, I wanna talk more about um, Kyle's test, because I like that data. And it's actually, um, I I was fairly convinced by it when you talked about doing a test. The concern I have, though, is that traffic that's entering the school that didn't have a left turn option in front of those buses that you were stopping from five seconds. They they had to go straight, so you knew that they weren't gonna turn. You could five seconds and go, five seconds and go. Never had to make that decision based on incoming traffic. The incoming traffic is either other buses or parents picking up their schools, their their kids from the school, and there's a lot of them. And.
Interestingly, during the time trial, there there weren't a lot of them.
Really?
I was, I was amazed at how few parent pickups there were. Frankly, quite amazed. The the number of students that actually take the buses is is pronounced. There were very few parent pickups. And the way they, the the school runs things, um, they actually do a fairly nice job with that, is the parent pickups um, are are forced to be deferential to the buses. So they go in, yeah, where Ken's got the, his his cursor now, the, any parent pickups that do come, they're forced to to sit in that little horseshoe area until all the buses have gone.
I can tell you from a.
So the parent pickups aren't really.
I can tell you from a parent pickup standpoint, and and I've I've had the school board here at their capital improvement plan talk about the layouts of their other schools as well. And they've described them as being nice, or or they've got them worked out and all that stuff. I can tell you from a parent's standpoint, not even close. Not at any of these schools. All of them are terrible from a parent pickup standpoint. Weaving parents' cars in and out of a parking lot and blocking the travel lanes in a parking lot. Uh, God help anybody that's parked there that wants to move and leave, um, in the middle of all of that. And doing it, and they do it at all the schools. And I'm not, can't fix that. Can't fix that here today. But um, the, i- i- it may look like it works from an engineer's standpoint, it may look like it works from a school board's standpoint. From a parent's standpoint, nothing about any of these schools with parent pickups works the way it should.
Two, two more things I'll ask you to consider is, one, the the time of day where, um, when when the buses come out, that two, it wa- and it's roughly, it was roughly a twenty-minute period from two oh nine to two twenty-four, so actually a fifteen-minute period when the buses come out.
Two oh nine to two twenty-four, okay.
So it's it's actually a fifteen-minute period. And and keep in mind that that two oh nine to two twenty-four in the afternoon is very low peak traffic on on any of our roads. So so the.
Well, I think it would be from the subdivision. And when I read the study that you did, the test, and I was thinking in my mind that we were worried about the people coming out of the subdivision, coming over to the school and causing the problem. And that's why when Alistair did the diagram here a second ago, a sort of light went off in my head that it, I was thinking about the completely wrong group of traffic being the ones interfering with the buses. It's actually people that are trying to go straight through that intersection into the school that are going to be the headache for the buses, because as a bus is sitting there at a stop sign, not sure what to do, he didn't know what that guy coming straight at him is gonna do. Come right to his left without bothering anything, or turn right in front of him. And that's where I think the five seconds, I'm I'm worried about that. If I was convinced that the buses only had to stop for five seconds or ten seconds, I'd have no problem at all moving ahead with all all that traffic coming and not knowing what they're gonna do. Lynn, I'm sorry.
If that's what your concern is, we have a sign at the high school that says you can't come out Woodb- Woodbury Street or McKellwin Street between these hours. We can put a sign up, coming in, Alistair, you be quiet, no, no, you gotta let me finish. You can put a sign coming in Madeline Bennett, towards that intersection, that says, no left turn between these hours, and you have the same situation that you have at the high school on McKellwin Street. And that eliminates that problem.
That's a good point. If I could, Bob, just getting back to, so my point one was that the the traffic in the subdivision at two oh nine to two twenty-four is is far from peak traffic. Couple that with the the fact that the the driveway is on the outside of a curve, um, which led le- lends itself to very good sight distance. I, my prediction is that most buses won't even have to stop the five seconds. As they're pulling up to the line, they're gonna be able to see where the traffic's coming. They've got a great view down towards um, Babusick.
Yeah, and I, I think you're right from Chestnut.
And the view to the right is 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 gonna be terrific, because they're on the outside of the curve, and and there'll be plenty of sight distance. So I couple that with the twenty mile an hour speed limits. Again, I personally, I I think this this driving, the design around the the school bus timing issue isn't the way to go. And and I fear that that's where this is going.
I um, I I agree with you with respect to the uh, traffic from Chestnut Hill. I think not only is it very, very low peak time, I think within a matter of a few months of being operational, all the people in that subdivision are gonna learn not to go that way during that time, cause Wilson Hill is a clear shot and get out of there. Um, I really like what Lynn's talking about with having a restriction to say, you can't come into Chestnut Hill in that peak hour time in the morning and the afternoon. And that way, the buses will know that any traffic that's coming at them is gonna go past them to the left. And they can stop for five seconds and go without worrying about the possibility of someone turning in front of them.
With with all due respect to that, I I think the only thing the bus driver knows is what they can actually see. And that's why in any, in any configuration, I would, I would hate to see approved something that had only stop signs on the the road and not at the driveway. Cause at the end of the day, the bus driver is the professional driver, and it's their job to make sure they clear the intersection safely. And by not putting a stop sign at the driveway, you're giving them sort of an excuse to just get out there and 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 that's, that's, that's my biggest fear in all of this, is is the bus drivers not not showing due restraint. And 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 I'm not trying to slight bus drivers, but it it only takes one slip, and that's when the accident happens. If the professional bus driver stops at the driveway every time and makes sure it's clear, there will never be an accident there. And at the end of the day, that's what this is all about. It's about a safe intersection.
One, some- something else that occurred to me as you were saying that, in terms of the bus traffic and all of that. No matter how we configure this, there's gonna be crosswalks in this, cause kids are gonna go to Chestnut Hill or they're gonna go somewhere. And there's gonna be a crosswalk across the school, school's driveway, no matter how it's laid out, a curve or a T or anything else. And if there's a crosswalk, then the buses are gonna stop there.
Correct.
They're gonna have to stop there.
Stop signs for everyone. Everybody gets stop signs, all of you, everybody. That's what I think.
Is it, is, are you saying you should put a stop, a stop sign on all three legs?
Yeah, everybody's gonna know. Just stop sign, everybody.
It's a three, if you have it as a three-way stop intersection, that might well work.
And we can do the curve to slow it down, but stop signs for everyone.
You're getting out of control, if I may. One, you're talking about two short time periods, a hundred and eighty days of the year, right? The other hundred and eighty days, there's, there's nothing going on. And maybe there's an occasional MYA or or school dance or something like that you wanna consider. But I don't think those are considerations for controlling this street design. And so let's not get carried away. The other thing I I wanna really point out, that seems to be being missed, is that the stoplight at Babusick Lake Road is what seems to be causing the biggest delay here. And he's talking about a five-minute delta, and we're talking about five seconds times nine or eighteen. There's no connection between those. If it, if the bus stays ten or fifteen or twenty seconds, there's still gonna be a five-minute delay because of the stop sign at Babusick Lake and and Madeline Bennett. Stop light, if you will. And that's a random variable as to how many buses can get through before it turns red, and then how long it takes before they can get going again and things of that nature. Those times are much, much greater than the five or ten seconds that we're bandying about here. And and so I I totally disagree with a lot of the argument about having to have this road be a straight shot into the bus, into the school. The school would be the only private entity in town that has its own driveway that's a public road. And and I don't think that's appropriate. I think any parking lot exit, driveway exit from a house, any of those kinds of things, people oughta be taking the responsibility to stop and make sure the road is clear before they enter it. And just making it a straight shot just encourages them not to do so. And I don't, Alistair. And I just, I think it's inappropriate for us to do that. I I I'm not even sure we need a stop sign there, because it's coming from the parking lot, it's coming from a driveway. It's their responsibility to make sure the road is there. You can put a stop sign there, but I I certainly don't think we need to have one on um, Old Blood Road for the other hundred and eighty days of the year. And the other ninety percent of the time on that that intersection.
I I'm inclined to agree with you on everything except for the all, it already exists now, and that's why we're having the fight, the fact that the school's already there, and they've already got their established traffic patterns and that whole thing. So I think that's, that's the reason why this argument goes around. So, I think that's, that's the reason why this argument goes round and round. And that's why I thought, you know, stop everything, and then it's, it's a non-issue. But I, I agree that it should be a driveway. I agree that it should be the curve road, and I, I think that's the smart decision to do. I just, it's the fact that there's the issue with the school right now that we're battling with, so that-
Lynn?
This comes down to my basic premise originally was, if we were approving the subdivision, there wouldn't be an issue. And if the school came in later and said, we wanna have our driveway come off of this intersection, we would've said, fine. Because it was reversed, I think Desrey's suggestion of having a stop sign on each of the three solves the problem. It, it's a, I've got one in my neighborhood, which is the stupidest stop sign that I've ever seen, but it's there. You stop, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't do a California roll, but I'm hesitating on two seconds, maybe? That's, that's a, that's a no-brainer. Put a stop sign on each of them. It's up to every driver to pay attention to what's going on and go through safely. I don't think we need signals. I don't think we need priorities to anybody. I think you put a stop sign on each of those intersections, and very quickly, non-bus traffic will quickly learn when the times are that you go through there, and when the times aren't, you don't, and it won't be an issue.
When you say put a stop sign on each of those, you mean-
All three.
Obviously on the school, and all three directions?
All three.
All three directions, all three directions. Tom thinks that's overdone.
I think it is too, but because of the priority that we've got the school there now, if, if it had been reversed and we had the subdivision before they put the school in, I would, I would say it would be different. But because the school is there now, and there's a history of traffic flow on everybody's part, I think we change the, the, the perception by putting a traffic signal, a, a stoplight, a stop sign at each-
And Mr. Chairman, I would say that if we were doing it the way that Lynn has suggested, the middle school wouldn't have designed the school layout the way it is.
Quite possible.
I think they would've made a, I hesitate to use the word better, but they would've had to use a totally different conflict, concept of how to get vehicles, both buses and parents. And I connect you, what Bob says, parental access to middle school is, is as bad as all the rest. You would have a difference, a different design, road design, which was much more friendly to the problem of being the second in, the second in line instead of the first in line.
Yep.
I, I think that you're right, Alistair, although I would point out that when Madeline Bennett was built and the school was built, the knowledge was there that Old Blood Road existed, and somebody might come someday to want to expand it and build it. And the actual easement to do this was built into that transaction at that time.
Yes, you're right.
So, if the school design isn't what it should be because they assumed this would never happen, um, I guess that's a decision that they shouldn't have made. Ken?
I would submit to the planning board that this particular design, as is, without signage, preference being stop sign at the school driveway exit, then would work with two additional stop signs on the public right-of-way, would also work with a traffic officer, would also work with the signals we previously discussed. This alignment works with all four of those options. If it pleases the board, we could proceed with this. The subdivision's rather large, it's not gonna be built out in a year. I would propose that this particular alignment with a stop sign at the exit of the school is what we pursue. If during the course of the construction of the subdivision is desired to have two more stop signs placed, then I think I could speak to my client that the cost for two stop signs, if that's what's needed, after a year of use, or some period of time, then we would be willing to do that.
I think Mr. Mr. Puntin just made a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I think he almost did. Um, let's see if we've got any public input or testimony. Any abutters or citizens wish to weigh in on this application before we consider, uh, some decisions on this road layout? Good, seeing none. I think that the board's probably had, uh, we, we've examined it every way to Sunday. Um, what's, what's the will of the board, I'd accept a motion.
I, I move to make a, a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I move to make a, a motion to, um, proceed with the curved layout as submitted in our packet, um, with the, uh, this-
stipulation?
Yeah, with the, what's that?
Stipulation.
Yeah, with the stipulation that, um, during the course of construction, uh, if it is required to do the stop signs that, that they're added in, or they look at another option to correct the traffic problems.
Thank you for that. Is there a second for the motion, has Desrey made it?
I'll second it for discussion. Uh, does this motion mean that there will be no stop signs initially? And is that what you meant?
One at the school driveway?
One at the school driveway.
Yep.
And I would offer the suggestion in terms of how the motion was framed, that the potential for the existence of two more be somehow incorporated into a performance bond or maintenance bond kind of a situation where the money's there, since they're gonna have that anyway?
We'll be able to figure that out by the time we get to the actual decision-making on this. Is at this point, you're just giving a basic consensus of the board in terms of the design because you're not making any final decisions on the project tonight?
Okay, what I wanna, I want to, uh, second a motion that has this layout as proposed by the developer now, with the stop sign on the exit from the school. And, and that's what I want to second. That's the motion I want to-
Okay.
And that's the one I put together.
Okay, thank you. It was, just wasn't clear to me, I wanna be sure what I was seconding.
Now, Desrey's motion also had the possibility or this potential for added stop signs if they become necessary in some way that we figure out as we go through this process. And that's consistent with your motion?
With everything in the future, well-
Or you're second, is okay with that?
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with it, but that applies to everything we do, doesn't it, uh, you know, in the future?
Make adjustments as time goes on, as warranted by the situation on the ground.
Yeah, this can be adjusted as warranted.
Potentially, but not through the planning board. I mean, typically, once we approve a, a, a situation with the road layout or whatever, it didn't come back to us because the towns decided that a stop sign needs to go here.
So, who determines? The board of, uh, the council can put up stop signs whenever they want, is my understanding, wherever they want, based on, probably on the recommendations of the DPW, but-
And Highway Safety Committee.
And, yeah. So, they can put them up anytime in the future when the issue warrants it.
And it would go through a public hearing process.
Yeah, yeah. So, that doesn't need to be part of our motion, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Understood, and I tend to agree with that as well.
Yeah, okay, good.
So, is the person making the motion care to amend it to remove that part of it?
I will retract that part then.
Okay.
We trust-
The motion is to approve the road layout that the applicants proposed, which is the curve with one stop sign at the school entrance only.
Right.
Anybody else with that?
That's what I wanted to second.
Any more discussion on it?
Ken? I retract it, but basically what we're saying is, we're accepting it as designed right now, and we'll just see what happens.
Well, it's not us to see what happens. If there's a problem, then the council or somebody else can-
Solve it.
Address it. And the applicants expressed some willingness to work with the folks doing it.
I'll stick with the motion.
Kyle, I trust you, is this the right thing to do?
I believe so. And, and regarding cost for, for the item, um, that, as Ken stated, the subdivision's gonna take multiple years to build. Once the subdivision is completed and accepted by town council, we still have two years of maintenance bond. Um, so there would be, especially on a project this size, there'll be a significant amount in the maintenance bond that we could utilize for any upgrades that were found to be necessary.
Understood.
And, and any issues that, um, that were encountered, be it public, the school, or whoever, they could come directly to Public Works. I'm sure the town council would address them. The Highway Safety Committee is another avenue for, for addressing concerns. Um, so there's plenty of opportunities for, for folks to be heard, should any issues be perceived.
And that goes for the school board and the school district as well. If they wanna raise particular issues of, uh, uh, after operation, they certainly have the ability to come to Highway Safety, raise the issue, order the council or Public Works as well.
Now, Ken, your design has the normal twenty-four hour school zone signs?
Yes, that's one of the details that we paused on, but we've committed that, uh, much like just outside here on Babusick Lake Road, is the twenty mile an hour school zone signs with the flashing yellow lights.
Okay, so those are part of it as well?
Yep. Um, those details will be forthcoming as the next plan revisions and addressing the comments, and that will be going to CLD for their review as well.
Okay, I got you. If there are no more comments or questions, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yep.
One opposed, any abstaining? One, two, three, four, five, six to one with Mr. Milne's opposed. Um, so there is your feedback on the road design. Um, there are a couple of other issues that, uh, are in the memo or in some information that we probably ought to at least touch on a little bit. I guess there's a question about, um, the buffer at the end of your cul-de-sac, and that you're acquiring it by virtue of an easement rather than it being a buffer on your own property?
Correct. Um, this situation, um, is not unlike something we recently did over off of Pearson Road, uh, the Cota subdivision, where, um, a landowner involved in that, Mr. Cota himself, owned adjacent parcels. And due to the configuration of the parcels, he agreed and felt it was logical to place the one-hundred-foot buffer for a cluster on his adjacent parcel, which was not itself being subdivided. This is the same principle where this is the El Corra backland. Uh, if I zoom out to the west, El Corra owns a large tract out here. El Corra is also part of the applicant. He is a landowner, he owns a parcel down in this area. So, in the same fashion as we did with the Cota subdivision, since El Corra is an applicant on this, he is also, uh, accepting of placing the hundred-foot buffer as opposed to within the land being subdivided on his piece directly adjacent there too. Um, and that's as simple as that.
So, it'll be accomplished by an easement recorded registry?
Yes, yes. In fact, there's gonna be a, an easement that doesn't show on this particular plot. We have this grading area that actually slightly goes on, because the cul-de-sac is brought up to the base, adjacent parcel for proper planning and future road expansion. Uh, in order to construct that cul-de-sac, some of the grading actually goes on to his land as well. So, there'll be a slope, uh, uh, easement, if you will, that goes on that as well. So, there, there was already going to be a slope easement anyways.
But he is the owner of the adjacent parcel, that was a question.
And he is an applicant as well.
Yep.
Now, does that easement area have to run the whole length of the property, or just near the building lots?
Well, technically, it could just run by the building lots, but, uh, that's something that if he felt he wanted to, uh, adjust at this level, uh, for simplicity's sake, quite frankly, he was drawn the, uh, the length of the affected area.
Who's gonna own the common area in the subdivision?
At this point, it's going to be a fractional interest of the landowners with, once again, we talked about the Merrimack Conservation Commission holding an easement, but they did not care to hold fee necessarily. So, the fee, the ownership of the open space, at this point slated to be a one-seventy-first interest on all owners.
So, that easement's gonna be part of that fractional ownership?
I'm sorry. In, in this particular case, this particular easement is part of the Merrimack Conservation Commission easement, not just standard open space.
No, I mean the, uh, buffer easement that you've got between El Corra's two properties. He can't give an easement to himself, he's gotta give it to somebody else. It would be that homeowners association?
It would be to the association, they would be in association with this open space. Yes.
And that's gonna be available to them in perpetuity? Because it's a reported easement? Um, does anybody have thoughts or discussions about this? I think that Tim has suggested to me that we, uh, don't do this normally, and that it's relatively unusual, although Ken cited an example where he thinks it's-
It, it's just not specific to the letter of the ordinance, and I wanted to raise the question for the board's attention. So long as you're comfortable with it, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the situation.
I think that the potentially two differing views on this is, the intent of the regulation is that you have a hundred-foot buffer on your property as the intent. And the other possible reading is that it's supposed to have a hundred-foot buffer, and who cares where it is? Somewhere between the two things, and, and it's a hundred-foot buffer. And so, we've gotta decide whether we want to have, hold one of those positions or the other with respect to this, so they know how to engineer it. Ken?
And, and I, I have to say that this is, I, I didn't expect to have this occurrence or have this opportunity in, in the same fashion as we did with the Cota subdivision. It's solely because one of the applicants is the owner of the adjacent parcel. Uh, and so, in my opinion, this is entirely appropriate.
Now, if we decided that we didn't wanna have it satisfied as an easement, I'm guessing the applicant would probably just do a lotline adjustment, since from the applicant's standpoint, this property, this strip of land's gonna be tied up.
I was gonna say that, that if it wasn't agreeable in this fashion with an easement, that a lotline adjustment would accomplish the same idea unnecessarily.
And I, you know, and, on the ground, from a practical standpoint, the only difference between the two is paperwork. Whether you do it as a lotline adjustment, or whether you do it as an easement.
Time and money as well as the paperwork, yes.
So, the question that, that comes up is if, if you have this cul-de-sac and you wanted to extend that road, could you do it across that hundred-foot buffer if it was part of the cluster subdivision in the future?
You'd have to reserve that right in that easement.
Our, our subdivision sheets actually show that.
I understand it shows it, but if you had a hundred-foot buffer as part of your cluster subdivision, would you be allowed to run a road through that in the future?
Well, that's how we are proposing that, uh, it be allowed and approved, that there's a reservation to allow the, it, road to then extend it through it. And once again, these buffers are directly adjacent to abutting property lines, not necessarily to, uh, along frontage. So, you could actually make the argument that if there's frontage here at the end of this cul-de-sac, then, uh, this certain section of a hundred-foot buffer actually isn't necessary, isn't needed, it's not required. We're showing it as a matter of an offset hundred-foot with the reservation of a road, uh, subject to a possible road.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
And I like the way you're doing it here, and I prefer to keep it this way so that we can have that cul-de-sac at the edge of the property and available to go forward. I just wondered if we, if we forced you to pull back or to redraw the lotline, whether that would create a problem in the future. And, and so I'm arguing against doing that.
Yeah, the same, similar problem would still occur to some degree.
I think, my, my impression is that either route accomplishes the same thing, whether you accomplish it by an easement, or whether the land's owned by the homeowners association outright. Um, and either way, there's a reservation for this road to go through. And so with that, I'm inclined to say that the applicant ought to be able to proceed whichever way that they think works best for them, but if someone thinks it, thinks of it differently.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't recall us ever encountering this particular problem in previous subdivisions. Usually, the buffer is within the property lines of the subdivision and of the land. But I see no real objection to doing it this way, especially if you're providing for future expansion beyond this. So, uh, I guess I don't have a real objection to it, uh, although we don't have a precedent that I can think of.
Yeah.
I think it's acceptable within the-
Although I think Ken's telling us we did something similar with Cota.
Well, yeah, Cota, I wasn't too close to Cota myself, I was thinking back long before Cota, yeah.
Right. Okay. Um, is that enough feedback, Tim, or you wanna vote? It's fine. Um, what's the other issues?
There's an issue with phasing, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. We just wanted to get, that's one of, um, of, uh, Mr. Thompson's notes, is that, uh, we, we wanna get some idea of what you have in mind on phasing this as you go. And maybe it's too early to do that, but we will be looking for that.
Yeah, I do have thoughts, and we have some plans for that, uh, but I don't think it's necessary to get into that tonight. I do have a couple of other things myself that I'd like to comment on, and I know we've run, uh, a bit later than some of us might have expected.
Ken, okay, um, in the staff's memo, there's some comments about the wastewater division, um, looking at a cross-country line being eliminated. What are your thoughts in terms of the plans or the design for that?
Uh, we've had some discussions with Kyle Fox on this, and, um, this is the location where due to gravity sewer and keeping the depth of the sewer at reasonable depths, uh, right now, we have manholes in this vicinity, uh, or structures at about ten feet down. Uh, if we were to eliminate this quote-unquote cross-country run and have this low enough so that the sewer, uh, so the sewage could actually flow quote-unquote uphill, if you will, in this direction, the sewer would have to be about nineteen and a half feet down, quite a substantial depth. Um, to alleviate that, we've talked about taking this section of road right here and swapping it with lot forty-two that you see here, so that the road is coincidental with this cross-country sewer eliminating the cross-country nature of that.
So, you're moving the road instead of moving the bank?
And the, the, the location of the sewer really made sense, especially when we were utilizing this area adjacent to it directly to the east for the stormwater drainage. Uh, in our preliminary designs, which you may not recall, there was a fairly large stormwater, uh, basin there, uh, that we were then dispersing water through, through that location. And it became, um, possible to collect that more down the hill, uh, towards the school- And it became possible to collect that more down the hill towards the school. That just left this sewer easement or this cross-country sewer standing out all by itself, if you will. And so we decided it makes more sense to swap the road in this location and have a four-way intersection here. Lot 42 will then be more so to the north and west. So...
So we talked about the buffer, we talked about phasing, we talked about the sewer.
I think that's something Kyle Fox suggested that he liked. Is that right or, you know, he preferred, yeah?
So, obviously, there's a tremendous number of comments in the staff's memo, but that's because we're in the early phases with this. You guys got to get this to CLD review?
Correct.
What's your timeframes and plans and schedules for making that happen?
Soon as possible.
All right.
I don't have a date. Obviously, tonight's progress as far as the intersection of Madeline Bennett, that was the paramount issue for us to resolve so we can move forward, complete our design and then submit to CLD and DES for our state permitting as well. Yes, there are some comments, a lot of them are not a concern to us from both town staff and DBW as well as wastewater. We do have a few key items to work out with them. And I wanted to get your input on one in particular item before I wrap up tonight, if I could.
Please do. With respect to CLD, our next meetings are in two weeks or in four weeks. And CLD gets 10 days to do their review. So I think scheduling in two weeks is probably a little too ambitious, but...
Four weeks.
All right, what else you want us to talk about?
In the past, I've talked about the sidewalk requirements and how there's a grass strip in the requirements between the edge of pavement and the edge of the sidewalk itself. I suggested that we might likely seek some waivers to eliminate that grass strip in the wetland crossing areas. Once again, is a repeated theme, to keep the wetland impact as narrow and as minimal as possible. Well, in the three crossing areas that we have, we're showing sidewalk. In the crossing that comes right off of Old Blood Road initially, we designed that with the constraints of both the abutter and an easement that was already acquired to the north and a wetland with a vernal pool to the south. And we were working with a very small window. Our first design pass uses one-to-one slopes, which is a waiver item, which Kyle Fox in the meeting said he will not support. He recommended we consider some retaining walls perhaps, or go to a three-to-one slope. Three-to-one slope would substantially increase our wetland footprint. We considered at the minimum requesting a waiver from the grass strip between the pavement and the sidewalk in this vicinity. But then we realized, well, is there a necessity for a sidewalk at all coming from what is now the Old Blood Hammerhead, which is in recent years just constructed with four homes, which does not have sidewalks? And then the balance of the internal property as well as the sidewalk going down to the school? So in addition to seeking waivers for removal of the grass strip at the wetland crossings, I'm asking the board if you would consider a waiver for removal of the sidewalk from where the Old Blood Hammerhead would split off up to where we are proposing the four-way intersection. Is there a necessity for a sidewalk in that section?
Didn't we talk in a recent meeting about changing the elevation of the roadway to reduce your wetland footprint? And that got us there?
As a matter of fact, we're also requesting through Kyle and don't have his full support yet until we understand what we're doing with the slopes of this crossing. Reduction of the road grade as we enter into this, we're seeking a 1% road grade to keep the height of the road as low as possible. To help with the impact of the wetlands, if we cannot go with the one-to-one slopes and we have to widen our slopes, if a retaining wall is found not to be suitable, then by eliminating the sidewalk, we would accomplish a balance of what's reasonable as far as improvements versus the wetland impact that's associated with those. So the question is, is the sidewalk section from this Old Blood Hammerhead entrance up to what will become the four-way internal intersection, is a sidewalk through that necessary in the board's opinion? And before I design that or come and ask for a formal waiver, I didn't want to go through that process without getting some feedback from the board members.
Let everybody weigh in on it. I think for me personally, I think providing the applicant some relief in the road grades or the slopes would be preferable to, and then keeping sidewalk would be preferable than to getting rid of the sidewalk in order to preserve some of those other issues with slopes and things. I'd rather sort of the sidewalk be higher on the priority list of things we try to compromise with than the first one thrown overboard.
And I understand that and I hope the board also understands that much like the intersection issue with the school board and trying to work with them, we also get comments and input from DES as far as what they will approve, if you will, and how much that they might be willing to bend. Once again, they don't prefer retaining walls because critters cannot scale up a retaining wall. They like certain-sized culverts, even if the culverts oversized from an engineering standpoint. They have their own wish list that we also have to try to balance as well. And so I'm merely asking for some room to consider as we move forward.
Tim?
Ken, do you have a length of, from where that four-way intersection is to what would have been the end of the sidewalk there?
Let's see, we have, and these stations are upside down. Let's call it 28 to 36, so about 800 lineal feet, 750 perhaps.
And from, in terms of the overall subdivision, when you actually lay out your redesigned lot layout, each new lot in the subdivision will still have sidewalk basically adjacent to it at some way, shape, or form?
Yes, absolutely.
It would just be that one section that would be missing.
And that's correct, as well as we're bringing the sidewalk all the way down to the intersection with the school as well.
So essentially, the section you're talking about would be eliminating a sidewalk that basically terminates in the middle of the road?
Well, yeah, it terminates when you get off of their property, but at least the people in the subdivision could walk to the end of the subdivision.
Yeah. I'd like you to quantify that, Ken. How much area differences are we talking about here to give up a sidewalk? I mean, how much wetland impact? And I know you've got, you've got a certain wetland impact that you're mitigating somehow, somewhere on this site, right? And how...
Currently, I'm sorry, but I can't give you a value of, if we're at one-to-one slopes now, where would we be if we went to the full three-to-one slopes that are required by the town requirements, the design standards? Versus where we might be if we had the ability to do a retaining wall? However...
That wasn't my question.
Well...
I want to know what would be the impact of just the sidewalk, you know? What are you saving by eliminating the sidewalk? What is the impact on the wetland?
I don't have, I don't have an easy answer for you at this point.
That's what I would want to make a decision like that.
Based on the length, lineal footage of that, but I don't have that. But right now, we're all, and you mentioned mitigation as far as DES goes, we're already over the threshold given our off-site improvements. On-site improvements, we don't require mitigation. It's the off-site improvements that bring us into a mitigation factor.
Yeah. So my gut feel is that this isn't very much in that big scenario and maybe it's worth it to keep the sidewalk. I'm advocate of sidewalk, as is the chairman, and so I would want to know that.
Yep. And this is not a formal request at this point. I'm trying to get a sense of where the majority of the board might feel on this. So I don't do a design that won't be acceptable in the end.
I wouldn't have, Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't have a problem with getting rid of your grass strips if I said that right. I mean, I don't see that's a problem. But I agree with my colleagues over there that if you could keep the sidewalk right through, it would be better. But as far as the grass strips go, I have no strong favor for them because they just look a mess.
I don't think, I don't agree with that.
I know you don't, but that's all right.
In the, where you have to narrow it down to get through the wetlands crossing, getting rid of the grass strips is, I think, a fair trade-off. Generally speaking, the grass strips break up the pavement and allow water to infiltrate, which is a good thing that you want to have happen. And that's the purpose of having those grass strips where, between a sidewalk and a road. So I tend to like them, but I can understand if we've got to make trade-offs here, that's one that I would rather make, getting rid of the grass strips, talking about the slope of the road a few, a little bit, not an enormous amount, so that your height isn't that much. Coming up with some other ways to kind of get you there would be things that I would rather see. But if you tell me that we've tried everything that a pencil can put on paper and there's no way to make this work, then come tell us that and we'll listen to you fairly.
It may come down to the DES telling us that we may need to make an adjustment somehow. But I think I understand the board's take on this, so I'm satisfied at this time.
Okay. Ken, do you think that you could get three-to-one slopes if you remove the sidewalks?
Not in this particular crossing, no.
So you're still going to have to do something to either a slope waiver or a retaining wall?
Yes, we, the constraints, once again, you heard from the abutter, the direct abutter last time we were here. We have a slope and drainage easement in place already on that lot to the north, which is this dashed red line. And you can see with the one-to-one slope, we're right up against it. And then on the south side, this is the old road that was discontinued. This roadbed actually acts as a weir, if you will, and helps keep the integrity of this edge of the vernal pool. And we're maintaining that, once again, as discussed with our pre-app meeting at DES. And so the constraints in this particular location are very unique and therefore, no, we couldn't even use three-to-one slopes in this particular location.
Okay. So you have the feedback that you need from us on site?
I do.
Is there any other issues we should address, Tim? Ken? Continue for four weeks from now?
Shall I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we continue this matter for a four-week period till the 17th of March at 7:30 PM in this Matthew Thornton room with no further notification to abutters?
Is there a second for that motion? Second by Desiree? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero for the continuance. Ken, thank you for your diligent work to work through all these issues.
Thank you for your time.
Credit to your client. With that, I think the chair needs a five-minute break and recess for five minutes and come back together at about nine, 17, 18, 20, something like that. All right, it's 9:20. Let's call the meeting back to order and address number five on our agenda, which is Don Shagnan of Townsend Oil and Propane. As the applicant and Frank Trudowski as the owner, review for acceptance in consideration of final approval of an application for waiver of full site plan review for the use of the existing 3,400-square-foot building as a retail office distribution facility located at 759 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Akara Conservation Districts, tax map 7E, lot 42-1. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just as a refresher for each of you, you may recall that this was back in front of the board in December originally for this particular use. The board at that time tabled the site plan, consideration for the waiver of full site plan. In the interim, based on that meeting, Townsend Oil has relocated and done their office facility relocation into the building because that did not represent a change of use. The trigger for the change of use requiring the site plan was the introduction of the fueling trucks to the facility for distribution purposes. So the plan has been revised somewhat by Mr. Shagnan and is in front of you here tonight to have that considered so that the trucks can then be brought to the site to bring into full what the applicant is looking to do on the site.
Thank you, Tim. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at with the proposal.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Donald Shagnan from Townsend Energy. And I have basically, we, you had several requests from my last visit. And one, the main one was to clean up the plan for you so that it was legible. And I believe I've done that hopefully for you. I have also addressed the state road drive issue. We have, we have a permitted drive off there. I believe that was attached. I'm not sure if you received that.
We didn't rece...
Tim, did you have that?
Didn't receive.
Just got it today.
Okay, so, but we've got one in the file.
Do you have the permit in the file, yes?
Okay. Now, the driveway permit is, extends basically completely in front of the building and a little bit further, so it's a big wide driveway?
Based, well, it has, oh, sorry. Based on the permit from DOT, there's actually considered to have three separate driveways as part of this. The first is .142 miles south of Crestwood Drive on the east side. The second, .126 miles south. And the last one, .88 miles south. So each of the three getting progressively further away or closer to Crestwood Drive. So they, the DOT did permit the continuation of the three separate driveway accesses to this particular parcel.
Where's Crestwood Drive?
Those don't seem to show on the plan.
When I, when I approached the state in regards to it, they said it wasn't necessary, it wasn't a change in use. I explained that the, that town had requested it, so I filed the permit for it. They basically came down and reviewed the three existing drives and basically made no changes. So they're accepting them as is, as they were in, I believe, the 87 plan. But they were happy to have an updated look at it, I guess, so...
And I'm sure you are fine having had the communication from there. I'm just trying to figure out on the plan where a driveway starts and stops.
Where they are, they don't.
If you, excuse me, if you are on the DW Highway, you could see where the, the, there's a centerpiece there that has a drawing in there that was the original, there's a grass area in there in the middle. It's both sides of that grass area are actually the drives, the two drives, the first two drives they talked to him about. The other one's a dirt drive that goes on to the other property, the adjacent property.
Onto that existing gravel drive to that old house?
You know where that old house sits down in there?
So basically...
I'm sure you've all seen it at least once.
So there's three driveways that are essentially interconnected to make one big 75-foot wide?
Exactly.
Now, that's broken up in the middle with the sign, is there any landscaping or ground around the sign at all?
There is, there is. There are, there are, there's a grass area there that's, where you see the drawing out there, that is a grass area right there. And there are low stones going around it. So you actually drive around both of those.
Is there anything else about your plan that you want to tell us about?
Yes, I also took into account Mr., I hope I say this right, Mr. Disso's concerns about fencing and children around the trucks. You'll see that I've completed the fencing all the way around the property. And the front part of the fencing will be, the front part and the side that face DW Highway will be of the kind that have the slats in it to provide screening so that you won't be able to visibly see it from the road, which was also one of the requests or suggestions that we had.
Is there anything else you're doing inside the yard other than parking a couple of trucks?
We're not doing anything else inside of the yard. There will be propane tanks that will be setting at customers' houses when they come in before they go out. But there's really nothing else in the yard. You know, it's not like we're going to accumulate any trash or anything like that. It would just simply be, if a propane tank came from your home and it needed to be set in another house, once it has had propane in it, it can't go back inside a building. So it has to sit out till we reset it at another home. That type of thing would be out there.
But it would be extinguished of its contents.
Right, yeah. You're allowed to transport it. If it's, if it's an ASME tank, you're only allowed to transport it with 5% in it. So that'd be the maximum amount it could hold. If it was a DOT tank, you can transmit those full. But that's like 24-pound tank that you have at your, you know, for just cooking or something like that, that size tank.
I got you.
But eventually, we have to empty them anyway because we have to give people credit, so...
I see in your drawing and your plan, you've got, looks like some intent to put some landscaping right up against the building. What did you have in mind for that?
They'll, they'll all be indigenous plants to New Hampshire. We didn't put the specific plants in because there's probably what's available in the spring in this area that's indigenous. But it'll be low, you know, low lying, we're figuring about 18-inch to 24-inch where the window areas are in the front there. And then we would probably go with higher going down the left side of the building, probably some 36-inch high, that type of thing going down the side where there are no windows or anything. type of thing, going down the side where there are no windows or anything on the left, if you're standing at the, at the highway looking in.
How much open ground do you have that's-
There's about three feet of open ground there that we can plant, plant in.
Okay.
Three feet wide strip, roughly. It's not exactly three feet all the way down, but it's, it's very close to three feet.
So, flower beds and shrubs and that sort of thing?
Yes, flower beds, shrubs, that type of thing will be there.
That area around the base of your sign, that has any ability to put-
Yes, there'll be more shrubs around there. There's already existing two rhododendrons there, but it needs to be cleaned up with some more, you know, with some more plantings out there. So, the thought process is that there'd be flower beds on the two ends, and then in the center part of it, we would probably add a couple of more of the rhododendron bushes in the middle, so it gives it kind of a low lying, and then higher as it gets towards the sign area, towards the middle.
Now, your sign today has, like, a-
Has a temporary-
Yeah, a temporary sign over it.
Yes.
What's your plan to do long term?
We have a, a application before the town to just replace what's, what's there with a new one.
Okay, so just reface the sign or whatever it is?
That's right. Just gonna reface what's existing there. But for temporary, we just put that on, which was to identify who we were.
Nelson, you have some questions?
I heard you ask questions, and I heard answers that I liked, but I don't see any of these things on the plan called out.
In terms of there being more plantings and things?
Even the plantings that are here, I don't see any call-out for them. I don't see the call-out on the rhododendron. I don't see any planting shown on here, even along the DW Highway side of the fence. And I don't know if there's-
Well, I don't have plantings along the DW Highway side of the fence.
You don't, yes.
No. The plantings that, that are visible are, I can see on my plan, I'm not sure you're copy, are the areas that are marked off, just outside of the building in that three-foot area.
I see that.
Okay, yes. What, what we're doing along the fence is we're putting the, the privacy slats in the fence area.
Okay, I don't see those called out, and I don't see a call-out for the little, I see the little cloud-like things that I guess represent plants, but I don't see a connection between them and what you said, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I see at the very top center of the page, you have this legend that shows proposed foundation plantings, but normally, we would see something that talked about very generally-
Oh, yeah, I don't see that, okay.
Eighteen to twenty-four-inch indigenous planting kind of thing, something like that. Maybe Tim can help you with something like that.
I could, I could certainly add that to the notes, what we, you know, what we have discussed, you know, which is, which is that eighteen to twenty-four, and then the thirty-six on the other end.
Where is the light that's shown in your legend?
The lights are on the corner of each corner of the building. There, there'd be motion lights, and I put out that they would be two-hundred-and-forty-degree, twenty-three-hundred-lumen lights, and they will shine directly down on the property, but it will allow us to detect motion if somebody gets into the area, you know, that's fenced off, or around the sides of the building, or towards the back of the building.
It makes sense. I see them in your legend, though. I don't see them on the picture.
They're not there.
So, we gotta draw them on the corners of the building?
Okay.
So, there's four of those wall packs?
Yes.
I used to have a pen. There it is.
There's one on, you know, each corner of the building.
Okay. How high would they be mounted?
It's about, it's about ten feet, probably about eleven feet high.
Okay.
Because there's a foot of, of cement down there, so I'm trying to, you know, the foot of cement, then, then there's ten foot of walls, so.
Okay, and they're mounted on the wall, they're not on a pole or something?
They'd be mounted right on the corner of the building.
On the building, yeah.
Okay.
It's not a floodlight?
It, it is a floodlight, but it's the twenty-three-hundred-lumina floodlights, they're the newer ones. It will face straight down onto the property. One will be aimed back towards where the trucks will be parked back there, okay? The other one towards the, you know, just down towards the front of the building, same way with the other side, than the back of the building. Well, before we got in there, we found a lot of things left in the back of the building. Couches, chairs-
People dumping stuff back there.
Stoves. I mean-
It's a damn long way to Long Landville from there, you know?
It's amazing, just having the light on twenty-four hours a day there in the building. It's amazing how it stopped a lot of that people, because people know somebody's in there now, so. So, they're not, they're not showing up at night and providing me with all their dump. I did understand that they're probably putting it on other property, but at least it's not down there. I guess it's easier than going to the dump, I'm not sure.
Probably so. Over in the notes section, the kind of white area in the middle of the darker gray area, about two-thirds of the way down, you have one on low phosphates for de-icing?
Yes.
That should be low phosphate, slow-release fertilizer, not icing, because phosphates aren't, aren't de-icing.
Sorry.
So, Tim can help you with that, but it'd be low phosphates, slow-release fertilizer, and no sodium chloride for de-icing agents.
If, if I can, Mr. Chairman, based on the conversations that have been happening right now, under planning staff technical comments, I've added number nine to indicate the light locations at the corners of the building on the plan, and then number ten to correct the winter maintenance note referencing sodium chloride, and to add a note for the fertilizer related to the low, slow-release phosphates.
And on that note, Mr. Chairman, I believe we're right in saying that they don't have to have a spill control plan. This is item four.
I've had that discussion with the fire marshal. Spill control plans are governed by the EPA, and they're required on two, in two circumstances. One is storage above, above ground that's more than thirteen-hundred-and-twenty gallons. The other one is storage below ground that's more than forty-two thousand gallons.
Yeah.
But it very specifically excludes trucks-
That's what I thought.
Rail cars and ships. It was a power struggle, I think, between the EPA and the DOT, and the DOT won. The way SPCC plans are written, they're really written for a stationary tank.
Yes, that's what I thought.
So, they're not really written for this, but what I have done is I have met with the fire marshal, I've addressed some of his concerns in regards to, he wanted emergency listings. Really, the things he was looking for is emergency contacts, which are posted on our door, but he also now has one down there hanging at the station, and I've told him the type of sorbents that we keep on, on hand. I have more than enough to clean up, I could clean up quite a spill with what we have on hand. But, you know, more than that is that, I've been at this thirty-four years, I've had over a hundred locations, thousands of trucks. I've never had an oil truck with a tank spill in my yard. If you have an oil spill, it's generally because somebody's pressurized a tank or plugs, you know, at a customer's house, is where they usually happen. You know, there's, there's a plug vent or something like that happens. But not, not at a truck that's sitting there. They're, they're pretty well, they're pretty sturdy.
So, fire chief happy with you? Are they satisfied with your answers?
Well, he shook my hand.
My, my recommendation is to leave the condition as it's written in the memo, and we will confirm that it's been addressed satisfactorily to the fire department.
Okay.
Well, I, I have a concern with it saying SPCC plan. That's a very specific plan, engineered plan.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I have, I have a concern with that being on there. It's, it's very, it's, it's not only just left out, it's excluded by the EPA for vehicles.
Tim, would it be okay if the condition said the applicant shall address the comments from the fire department? And then doesn't have the call-out? Yeah.
And you're also complying with the NFPA codes for office. You've got sprinklers and all that good stuff.
That's a general-
That's the general one.
That's a general condition, yes. Okay.
And, Tim, were you referencing the EPA standard when you had the spill control?
Because that, that comment came directly from the fire department.
Okay, all right. Because I think it makes sense for us to at least to have, have some of the basic elements of what, you know, he's doing, which is, he's gonna have absorbents, he's gonna have, you know, so there's the difference between spill control plan and then the spill prevention and counter-control measure.
I agree, and I, I think that rewording for to say the applicant shall address any applicable comments from the fire department will cover us.
And I, I've already provided him with a list of all the sorbents and everything else that we currently have on, and I, I went down and also met with him again today. We've been corresponding by email. He's actually gonna stop up to the location to see it here in a couple of weeks. He hasn't seen it since there was a fire out back, so he kinda wanted to see what we've done. So, you know, I, I think we, you know, I, I have no problem saying I need to address his concerns. I think I have, but, but I'm certainly, will address them more. I was just concerned with the, the SPCC plan, because it's, it's a specific plan that really has nothing to do with what we wanna do.
Understood.
The, the lot there in the back where the truck's gonna be parked, is that all gravel in that, in that area?
It's paved.
It's paved. And does it, does it pitch towards the road or towards the back lot?
Well, the slope line on here, it basically, this property slopes this way, but I, I, towards the back where the pavement is, it's actually kind of like a little lip there. So, it's not really flowing that direction. It's, it's almost flat there with a slight lip towards the back where they paved it.
So, does the, does the pavement retain water?
Yeah, a little bit. Right there, it does, but it kind of flows off to the sides a little.
When you say to the sides?
To the left and right as you're standing on the highway.
Okay, I got you. I understand. Tim, procedurally, I guess, this is, this started out almost a change of use, and now it's more of a site plan review, or we're waiving full, or we're considering waiving full site plan review.
Correct. The, this is, has been determined as a change of use because of the, the fueling truck and the distribution portion of the use, which is what triggered the need to come for the planning board for consideration of either site plan or waiver of full site plan. First step would be still acceptance on the project, though.
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make, Tim had added a couple of requirements to his list, and I didn't hear him add the business about adding the slats in the fence, and that's something Mr. Shagnan's agreed to-
Yes.
And it just doesn't show on the plan. And the other thing was the location of the, of the landscaping materials. He's shown some around the building, but he didn't show the rhododendrons or whatever. Whatever landscaping material that goes around the base of the existing sign, I think, it just doesn't show any here, so.
I agree that it doesn't show there, but in his notes section, there is one that says indigenous plantings will be used in the front of the building facing the DW Highway, which is sort of a description of what the things are that he has shown.
Yeah.
And also, it says below that visual barrier will be installed on existing fencing facing the DW Highway, as well as the new gate-
Okay, I missed it. I'm sorry, it's buried up there. I, I guess I'm okay with that.
In the planning staff-
But it's gotta be done.
The planning staff technical comments, item eight, says they indicate where the ground sign in Grass Island is located. That's on Jillian's memo. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We accept this project for review.
Is there a second for that motion? Second by Desiree. She beat you guys to it. Any discussion on completeness? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Might as well take a moment and see if there's any public comment, any abutters or citizens wish to weigh in. Seeing none, we'll check that off our list of things to do. Next, we consider whether we would waive full site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant the waiver of full site plan for this project on the basis that strict conformity would propose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Is there a second for that motion? Desiree, again. She's faster than you, Nelson. Any discussion, any discussion on waiving full site plan review? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero to waive full site plan review. Does anyone have any more questions or comments or things that we would like to discuss with the applicant, or potentially add to lists of conditions? Please do, Tim.
All right. In the modifications I've made to the proposed conditions in Jillian's memo, item number four, we will eliminate subsection A and reword the sentence to say applicant shall address any applicable comments from the fire department. Under planning staff technical comments, add a new number nine to indicate the lighting locations at the corners of the building on the plan. Item number ten, to correct the winter maintenance note indicating sodium chloride, and to add a note regarding the fertilizer and the limitation of low releas, slow-release phosphates.
And then the slats in the fence?
That's on the-
That's already there.
Oh, it's on the, on the note, no, sorry. Mr. Chairman, on the basis of that, I'd like to make a motion. We grant final approval of the application from Mr. Shagnan, based on the memo by Jillian Harris of February twelfth, seventy-five, twenty fifteen, plus the additional items and modifications that we've indicated, and Tim just read out.
Seconded by Lynn. Seconded by Lynn. Any discussion? You gotta find some way to enjoy this, right? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Thank you for coming back with the proposal.
Thank you for coming and joining us.
Yes, I know you're already in town with the offices, but welcome to town.
It's, it's looking much cleaned up. I've seen it a few times. Thank you.
It's definitely cleaned up. All right. Item number six on our agenda is Auto Fair Realty Two LLC as the applicant, and Helios Investments LLC as the owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an amended application for a site plan to construct a two-thousand-ninety-five-square-foot car rental facility and outdoor vehicle storage parking. The parcel is located at three oh-two Continental Boulevard in the R Residential and Aqua Conservation Districts, tax map two B, Lot thirty-two. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just very briefly summarizing from Donna's memo, as you probably recall, this was a project that was conditionally approved back in September of two thousand and fourteen for the vehicle storage and car rental facility. Upon review by the developer and the applicant, they have since determined that they wanted to scale back the project due to the potential site improvement costs. So, what you see here tonight is a scaled back and amended approval, and I did just receive, which I will hand over to you, a couple of waiver request letters from the applicant regarding the parking lot lighting and the pedestrian ways and sidewalk requirements.
Now, these are the same waivers that we've considered in the-
That's correct, yes.
Read those at the right point. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at.
Good evening. I'm Katie Weiss with Bedford Design. Also here with me tonight is Bob Baskerville from Bedford Design, and Mike Cheever, he's here on behalf of Auto Fair.
I'm not sure it is.
It's got a green light.
Yeah.
Just move it closer.
Move it closer. Yeah, you're definitely on. I heard you can't touch it.
That close enough?
Perfect.
Okay, do I need to do it again?
No.
Okay, all right. So, as Tim said, we were here in the fall, and we got a site plan approved, and we looked at the numbers, and it was a little high, so what we decided to do was to scale back. So, I'm gonna run through the list of things that kind of changed from last time. The impervious surface got a lot smaller. We moved the storage area, which is the top part that has the fence around it, farther away from the abutters, which I know was a concern before, so that got smaller and moved to the south, which is the left side of the sheet. The amount of, therefore, because the impervious surface decreased, the amount of drainage area was smaller, so we were able, we originally had three underground storage areas, now we just have one. The underground one is in the bottom-left corner, yeah, Bob will point to it, you can't really see it there, and the other two areas are now above-ground detention, which is cheaper. We're going to raise the existing building. Originally, we're going to keep it there and remove the sewer-water service. Now, we're just going to remove that building, and we're actually moving the enterprise building near where that building was located. The next thing to change was the, is the driveway entrance. We've been talking a lot with the Department of Transportation about the location. We actually ended up moving it farther to the north on Continental Boulevard, and this is gonna give us more room for turning on Continental. We're obviously still in working with the DOT on that, so at the moment, that's where we're most likely going to be putting the driveway, but it could change and move back to where it was before. And we've also decreased the amount of storage area, so there's not as much snow storage inside. Originally, we're going to have snow storage stay inside that fenced area, but now we have put a gate at the end that can open up, and snow storage is beyond that. And buffers, which we talked about last time, they're the same as they were before. We have a, the very bottom-right corner with the abutter, we have a type, buffer C type one, which is a fence. one, which is a fence. And then past that, we have a buffer C type four, which are some pine trees, and then beyond that, everything is greater than 50 feet of woodland, so I'm not sure what type of buffer that is. And we do have some conditions we'd like to discuss with you. I didn't know first you'd like to have questions or comments or anything before I get to that.
We don't have to do completeness, because this is an amendment, correct?
Technically, you do not, that's correct.
Okay, so we can skip that piece of things? I'm not on.
Yeah, could I understand that? Because I was thinking we would have to discontinue the other one, or, this is being looked at as an amendment to an approved?
This is an amendment to the conditional final approval that was granted by the board in September. So, for purposes of the project itself, it has already been determined to be complete by the board. What you would do is, should you approve with the proposed conditions that staff has suggested, these would then supersede the conditions that were placed on the plan back in September, and a new six-month period would run from today's date.
Okay, with the new conditions, and the old conditions are obliterated.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
So, the applicant doesn't have the ability to go back and build the old thing once we get done today?
That's correct.
Not that they want to, because if they did, they wouldn't be here.
No, that answers my question, I, yeah.
Okay. If we don't have to deal with completeness, does any member of the board have specific questions with respect to this proposal?
Oh.
Mike, was there peer review? I missed that.
Yes, there was peer review, we just got the comments a few days ago, and I believe they've been sent off to Bedford Design at this point.
Anything substantial in the peer review?
Not that I can recall.
I don't think we've gotten them yet.
We'll be getting them tomorrow, then.
Okay.
I would guess that since we're shrinking down from where we were before.
Oh, alteration of terrain? What about it? Yeah, yes, we do have alteration of terrain permit.
You've got it.
For this plan or the old plan?
For this plan.
For this plan?
Yes.
Okay. What's the reduction? You mentioned there was a reduction in the area of the paved parking is what I was most interested in.
I knew someone was gonna ask that, I did not look at the number, a decreased number, I don't know if Mike Cheever knows that off the top of his head.
We're at something like 65 percent of what we were.
Sixty-five percent of what we were. You can see, this is the plan from before. New plan. They're at slightly different scales, I think, or maybe they're not.
You need a microphone, too.
In fact, this plan must be nice, must, the abutters must like it a lot better.
My name is Mike Cheever, I'm gonna be the construction manager for this. This is about 65 percent of the footprint areas the previous one was. To answer your question about how much pavement.
Yeah, that was, that was my question, and then, does that still work for your business? You have a lot less parking now, or storage.
Well, no, well, part of being a design builder is, you know, we have a budget, you get what you can afford. This is what can be afforded. This does resolve our problems next door.
Yes.
So, it's absolutely necessary for us, but this will do it.
Okay. How many cars can fit in the new proposed parking area? Is that what each one of these little rectangles represents as a car?
Yes, there's 213 in the storage lot itself, and my count on the employees is escaping me, but I think we're something like 50-ish.
The parking outside that area is.
Twenty-eight, thirty-seven.
Is that 200-odd spaces inside the storage area, both the new cars for Volkswagen plus the rental cars from Enterprise?
No, the fenced in, well.
That's Auto Fair?
Right, from that line up is Auto Fair, from this line down is Enterprise.
So, Enterprise doesn't use any of that storage up there?
No, no, in this, you see this little connecting walk that we have for the employees down here at the corner?
Yes.
Right, that's kind of the dividing line.
Okay. So, how many cars does Enterprise have on site to rent out?
I believe the same number that they have is 10, 15, plus 12.
Thirty-three.
Right, and they've got the 11 customers.
Thirty-three, thirty-nine, fifty-one, sixty, sixty-eight.
Is that what, for them?
There's a heck of a lot, there's 67 cars, but.
What are you looking at? From here down?
Oh, I did from there down.
From this little line?
Oh, oh, okay, sorry, okay.
So, there's these 10, and these 5, and these 16.
And then there's another 6.
Well, that's customer.
I suppose, yeah, okay.
They're satisfied with that number, 30 or 40 spaces for the car rental?
Yes, they actually have the same, if not more, than what they had previous.
Okay.
And quite honestly, I wasn't paying attention to their side of the equation.
All right. Any other questions by members of the board?
So, just for clarity, you are in fact taking the house down, even though the note said you're not.
Oh, that must have been a mistake. Which number noted that?
Well, I'm just looking at this letter dated the 27th, which says on the lot, the existing house and barn, we will remove the barn and propose a square foot facility.
I'm sorry, that was a oversight.
And then on the plan, it says, existing house to be removed, so I.
That was a mistake, I'm sorry.
If you read the notes, it's on here.
And there is a.
The town's notes.
The town's note, February 11th.
Okay, I was looking at their notes.
No.
There is another choice I wish. This particular plan is not in conformance with the lighting criteria, although it's better than the last one. And it was part of our discussion of trying to tone it down. I can come within compliance, full compliance, but I would need to raise the height of the light poles in the storage area from the current 22 feet to 25 feet. I would not have to increase the power of the lights, but I would need to raise them. I think for, for what we were trying to achieve, to try to minimalize that, I would prefer to continue to ask for the waiver and keep them lower.
Mike has pretty much summarized the request from Bedford Design in writing as that they're closer to compliance than they were with the previous plan, but still, for the same reasons, want to have reduced lighting in the storage lot, not accessible to the public, and not used for display, it's just a storage lot. And so, what's the will of the board with respect to the lighting waiver?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant a, this waiver on the basis of that. Can't find the piece of words, but it's in, the, the, the conditions, the site conditions make it, the waiver suitable and do not cause a problem. Here we are.
It sounds just like what the law says.
Specific circumstances relative to the site plan indicate that the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Put it in every memo. Tim puts it on every.
I know, but I couldn't find the right page.
Is there a second for the?
Second.
Wow, I've got a new eraser over here. Counsel Koenig seconds it. Any discussion on the lighting waiver?
I will say, I'm voting for the lighting waiver, despite what Mr. Millen said, because this lot is not accessible to the public, it's a closed lot that's only their employees use, and for that reason, I'm voting for it, okay.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero for the lighting waiver. They've also asked for a sidewalk waiver, for the same reasons that they did last time. Bedford Design on behalf of Auto Fair Realty respectfully requests a waiver of the site plan regulations. The site is very steep in the right-of-way, which would not allow proper construction of sidewalk. Our site's located along Continental Boulevard, which is limited access highway. This means the DOT has jurisdiction over the road, it also has a swale along its frontage that is used for New Hampshire DOT drainage. A sidewalk would disturb the existing drainage flow. That's what's included in the letter, and it's essentially the same argument we heard the last time that we saw this.
And we grant, I'd like to make a motion, we grant a waiver for the sidewalk, since the strict conformity would prove and pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the DOT, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
A second.
Second by Ms. Christensen. Tim, I don't remember our sidewalk discussion last time, was it a complete waiver the last time? Is there any sidewalks on the site as it exists today?
No.
So, this is exactly the same thing that we considered before? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero for the sidewalk waiver. Do we need some public input? Any members of the abutters, interested citizens wish to weigh in on this application? It's been a busy night for public comment, huh? We will gavel that public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we give final approval for the amended application.
We had some conditions we wanted to talk about.
Oh, sorry.
Please.
Under the conditions, number three talks about easements. What the owner would like to do, instead of having easements which are recorded, he would prefer to do all rights in a long-term lease agreement, instead of doing a separate plan which would get recorded. This way, if, the easement would run with the lease, instead of running with the land.
Explain that again? Give me that one again.
Okay, so, the owner would like to do, instead of doing an easement, which is something that you have to record at the registry, and would stay with the land forever, he would, they would prefer to put, I'm losing my train of thought, it's late at night, they would prefer to put the rights in the lease agreement. So, the lease agreement would be with Auto Fair, and it would give them the rights from the owner to cross the land, and it would be in that document instead of.
Yeah, I don't believe we'd need to modify the condition, because the way we've got it worded is, any proposed easements or any applicable legal documents, I think that would fall under applicable legal documents.
Okay, all right. Now, refresh my memory as to where there would be an easement and from whom to whom.
There would be an easement along the access drive, and up the center aisleway, to the back parcel piece of the land that's going to be used by Auto Fair. That way, they have, they're allowed to cross through Enterprise, what Enterprise, basically the Enterprise area, to get to the back part where Auto Fair's going to be storing.
Okay, so, instead of that, Auto Fair will lease that lot from, what, Helios Investments?
Yes.
And their lease would give them that access?
Yes.
Plus, control over the lot? No problem with that? Anybody else have issues with that? You think it's fine, Tim?
How does that get established? Is that something that goes with planning documents, or?
It's, yeah, we would review the copy of that and make sure that we had appropriate documentation of the file.
When you say we, do you mean town council?
Meaning the town legal council, if needed, would review and make sure that everything's fine. And then, the file would be kept in community development.
Now, Helios is also renting to Enterprise, too, so Enterprise doesn't own it, or?
Correct, Enterprise does not own it.
So, they're basically leasing to two tenants, and that's common area?
Yes.
In essence, I got you. What else you got to?
Okay, number four, talking about the DOT permit. We would like to move the DOT requirement into a separate condition, which would put the building permit, would put the DOT permit in, would have to have a DOT permit, I'm sorry, I'm exhausted. I'm sick. Yes, please help, I'm tired.
We have been talking to the Turnpike Bureau of, this is DOT District Five, this is Turnpike, this technically is a limited access highway. So, they originally didn't want us to move the driveway, now they do. We're not sure how long it will take, there doesn't seem to be any issues, but Auto Fair's use is to go through their driveway and get up here and build this. Since we have alteration of terrain permit, we were hoping that when the snow melts, if and when it does, we could start their construction and their road in only, and get a condition that this is not finalized, and we can't get a building permit until we have our final DOT approval. From an Auto Fair standpoint, and Mike can chime in if he wants, he doesn't see a need that they need this for this lot, they expect everything to go through their lot. So, since we have alteration of terrain approved, we're hoping to start construction on earthwork while this is in process.
So, what you'd like is to separate out the DOT requirement and attach that to the construction of the Enterprise Building?
Correct.
So, you need DOT before you get a building permit on the Enterprise Building, but not on the rest of it.
Right.
Tim, how does that work with respect to meeting these conditions and allowing me and the secretary to sign a plan?
It's, it's not standard practice. I have reluctantly allowed similar types of things in my previous job. What you would need to do is, you'd need to shift the DOT permit requirement to a general condition of approval tied to the building permit, which would not preclude the chair and secretary from signing the plan. Only would recommend that if you feel comfortable with that type of approach. Typically, we would not sign a plan until all state permits are in hand.
Tom? Anecdotally, I was using that driveway when I bought a car at Auto Fair recently, because they suggested that if I go on a trial drive, I go up Continental Boulevard and not go out into that intersection with Amherst Road. So, I'm not sure that I would believe that Auto Fair's not using that driveway today, and I wonder if that really makes sense to, to claim that they're not using it.
Well, it's not that they're not using it, it's an allowed use, and it would still, the DOT permit is for Enterprise, because it's a different use. So, the, right now, it's being used as storage, so it's the same use on the site. Does that make sense?
But it's a different driveway, isn't it? You're making a bigger driveway.
Yes.
The existing thing you use, Tom, is the shortcut.
Yeah, it's the current one.
But it's, but it's being removed, that driveway's being removed, so you need to get a DOT permit for the new one.
And the new one only happens when Enterprise is.
When Enterprise is set up.
So, I would imagine this would stay in place until we get the new permit, because we're not going to take out a driveway that we have rights to until we have a permit for this one. Of, I'm sure some people do go through that way.
Yeah, they do.
You know, it looks like a house lot, but once you know it's there.
At the recognition of the sales room.
Yeah. I haven't used it, but I'm sure people.
I go that way.
I'll hold up my hand and plead guilty. It's a shortcut from Home Depot.
From Home Depot?
What?
I tell you, my friend, you've got a different definition of short.
Yeah.
Not where I live.
What's the will of the board with respect to the request of the applicant to treat the DOT permit separately and tied to the Enterprise Building?
Let me ask this, if, if the present driveway is there, suppose, suppose DOT said no, for whatever reason, can you use that existing driveway if you had to? I mean, could that make your, could you make your site plan work, I mean, admitted you'd have to change it, with the old driveway location?
I don't think so.
It's been an interesting discussion with Turnpike.
Yeah.
Because we're using Steve Perner to do some traffic numbers, but this kind of falls outside the model. For this use, the trip generation model bases traffic flow on the size of the building. Well, we're not changing the size of the building, in matter of fact, the last, we're currently reducing the building. So, technically speaking, from a trip generation standpoint, this has zero anticipated increased traffic. I didn't realize it, but car rental facilities aren't in the trip generation manual, and they just have very low numbers. So, we had to go to a different Enterprise location and counter it. So, they're talking very low numbers. So, the question that Turnpike had was, there's a back entrance here that got built to the mall.
Penetech Square.
Right, Penetech Square, when this median got lighted. The question was, how much is this really used? Is it heavy use, is it very light use?
Into Penetech?
Right, into this back entrance here.
Yeah, I don't think it's used very much, to the dismay of the people that try to run a little butcher shop in there.
It's used quite a bit.
I've heard both, it doesn't have much, and it's quite a bit, so we just had counts done, I haven't seen the numbers.
I'm sitting at that bank. It's used quite a bit.
But you don't go here to get the Home Depot, right?
Lean your microphone, come on.
We'll find out from the counts, and they just, they have a stacking lane here.
Yes.
In the highway to take the left. DOT just wants to make sure that based on how long it takes to take that turn, that people coming in here, that we're not going through their stacking lane. And they just want real numbers to see how long, when you use it, if there's a lot. Are you normally the only person there, or do you have to wait in line?
Maybe one car.
Right.
I don't see that being an issue. I don't see that being an issue, but it is used.
We don't think it's an issue either, but their attitude was, let's prove it. Let's prove it's not... My only concern with the Turnpike Bureau is, I guess the commissioner has to sign the approval for us to move it outside of the original limited access way. I just don't know how long it's going to take to get to the commissioner's desk and for him to sign. Is the engineers don't have a problem with it. I just can't, I have no idea how long it'll take just to get a signature.
DOT Commissioner?
Yes.
I'm dealing with a deputy commissioner at the moment.
Oh. I don't even want to go there.
Yeah.
Who am I, sir?
The commissioner of DOT got promoted to something at UNH, big league position.
I forgot about that. But, I don't know whether, I assume the deputy can do it, but I just don't know what, how long the paper trail takes and how well Turnpike gets along with other bureaus and...
We, we may be able to expedite.
For, for reasons, for that, for re, for that reason alone, that it's not a standard district-level driveway permit, I've, I feel comfortable with shifting this to a general condition.
Is there a motion? Well, in terms of that general condition, but I guess we can treat them all together.
I'll summarize.
All right. What else you got for us?
Um, under general and subsequent conditions, number two, talking about the sprinkler system, Tim had mentioned that it's a standard note to, that you require, to require a sprinkler system. And we were wondering if we could rephrase that to, instead of saying sprinkler system, instead say something like the Meramec Building Code, Section eleven, that we meet the requirements of that, instead of saying you have to have a sprinkler system? Because we're not entirely sure with this model of a building if that's something that we actually need to have.
And just an explanation that we just saw that today. That was not in the original conditions. And for a one-story building of two thousand square feet, the client didn't think the building code requires it. If the Meramec Building Code does require it, well, he'll build it. But he didn't think that it was required for a building of that size. So we just wanted to take out the word sprinkler system and say that we will meet the Town and Mayor, Mayor Building and Zoning Ordinance, and if the fire chief says we need it, we need it. He just wanted to talk to the fire chief and his architect and contractor and read their building code before making that decision. And it could probably stay the way it is as long as it's discussed here of, that we will meet the Meramec Building Code.
Yeah, that being a general condition, it's not going to hold up the signature of the plan. That's something that would be worked out through the permitting process with the fire department.
So you're okay with the request?
I'm fine with leaving it as it is, or modifying it, whatever the board's will is. I think that ultimately, that, that came directly from the fire marshal, that comment, so I'd be remiss to modify it without his input at this stage.
It just says "shall be," so I, that made it sound like, it kind of sounded like we had to. Well, we haven't even shown the building plans yet, so we were a little surprised at that.
Is there a way to modify to say the applicant shall meet the comments of the fire chief as applicable with respect to, and then leave the rest of this here? So we're saying as applicant...
I'll, I'll come up with some language that works.
Just so we didn't have to come back for, if the fire chief says okay, I don't want to come back just to change a comment. But as long as, so we can work out...
Not for a general condition, we wouldn't need to.
Okay.
Okay, so you guys are happy with that?
And that's it. Thanks.
Tim, you want to summarize where we're at with all that?
Uh, the modification would be that item number four would simply state the applicant shall obtain the NHDES Alteration of Terrain Permit, provide copies to Community Development Department. And then new general condition one, then renumbering the rest, would be the applicant shall obtain the NHDOT driveway permit from Bureau of Turnpikes and provide copy prior to the issuance of a building, building permit for the enterprise rental car portion of the project.
Is there any more discussion by members of the board? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant final approval of the application by Auto Fair Realty to LLC as per the memo from Donna Polley dated February eleventh, twenty fifteen, plus the modifications as discussed and read to us by Mr. Tim Thompson.
Is there a second for that motion? Nelson wins this time. Slow motion win there. All right, Nelson has the second. Any discussion? All in favor of granting final approval for the motions, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Thank you all for coming in, and thank you for waiting to the discussion on other applications.
And I have to say, Michael, watching the construction on a daily basis, because I go past four times a day, it's fascinating, but, um, slow.
It's hard to build a building while you're using it, right?
It looks beautiful when, each day gets to look more beautiful.
Thank you for that. And that brings us to item number three on our agenda, which is a public hearing on zoning ordinance amendments. And this is the planning board will conduct a public hearing to consider recommended amendments to Sections one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, fourteen, and seventeen of the zoning ordinance pursuant to RSA six seventy-five six and six seventy-five seven. I know that Tim has put together a very detailed memo explaining that most of these things are language cleanups, and the real change here is the definition of junk, as in junkyard. Correct, Tim?
Correct. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you recall, at the joint, at the joint meeting on December second with the zoning board, we went over an initial draft of these proposed amendments. The purpose of this, the genesis of this actually goes back to the summer. General government asked my department to look at the, the junkyard section to make a couple of changes relative to some changes to state law. In doing that, we noticed several references to the Board of Selectmen, which doesn't exist. So that turned into, let's find all the instances of Board of Selectmen in the ordinance. That then turned into, well, there's a bunch of other things that don't jive with our current form of government and departmental structure. And we then took that opportunity, since we were already doing all that, to look at incorrect section references due to various amendments that have taken place over the years and other just clerical cleanup items throughout the sections that Bob had mentioned in the introduction. The only real substantive change of this was as a result of that joint meeting. Member Redding had suggested that we look at the junkyard definition, and we have in Section two revise that definition to add a couple of additional items that were discussed that night. So if you go to page one dash five on the bottom, top of the page, new number twenty-eight, junk, we've added the language that says, "Junk shall also include any worn-out or discarded materials included, but not limited to, but not necessarily limited to, construction material, household wastes, including garbage, discarded appliance, discarded commuter, and discarded consumer electronic devices." Other than that, the remainder of these amendments are pretty simple in nature, and hopefully will clean up and clarify sections of the ordinance that are long overdue.
Thank you for the explanation, Tim. Any discussion? Procedurally, Tim, we vote on these tonight, and then they go where? To the town council for their...
What we would need tonight from the board is if you're supportive of these, I'd need a motion to recommend the town council adopt the proposed changes as outlined in the draft and as summarized in the memo dated February tenth.
And then they get to go have three readings?
Then they'll have the readings and public hearing with the council as well. Correct.
Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? Is there a motion on the proposed amendment? Any member of the public wish to weigh in on the proposed amendment? No, I understand. You're right. We will gavel that public hearing closed now. And what's the will of the board with respect to the amendment? Lynn?
I move that we recommend to the town council adoption of these...
Turn your microphone on if you're going to make...
I move we recommend to the town council adoption of these proposed zoning amendments.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Second by Mr. Milne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero to move that again. Tim, thank you for all the work in going through and cleaning up all that fun. I know that zoning amendments are probably the least favorite part of your job.
This is actually one of the more unique sets of amendments I've done in my career, where the volume of changes does not really reflect the complexity of what we did.
Yes, I can believe that. I can believe that, yes.
Yeah, I, I think that where I've seen similar things before, people would just repeal and replace rather than go through and make in seventy-seven changes like that, but...
The tediousness of these changes is incredible.
That brings us to item seven on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any other items of concern they wish to discuss?
Just as a, just an informational item, now that this section of zoning, these set of zoning amendments have passed through the planning board, the next item, as was discussed again at that joint meeting with the zoning board, would be to start looking at the ADU section. So I would anticipate, once we get the council's approval on these amendments, assuming we get that, my staff and I would then come forth with some changes to the ADU section.
Thank you, Tim. Any other discussion or action regarding other items of concern? I would, the only item of concern I have is not really for discussion, but just to use the television pulpit to suggest that anybody that's interested in being members of this board or others, there are vacancies for us, both planning board and probably virtually every other board in town, zoning board.
The zoning board has two alternate positions open. The planning board has two alternates plus a full member open currently.
So everywhere that I go, I...
I have to put one more plug in. Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee has about eight openings right now.
The which?
They, right now, only have two regular members and no alternates.
So which, which committee?
EDCAC.
Oh.
Uh, we do have one person that has expressed interest, and Patrick Dwyer from the zoning board is interested in serving on EDCAC. But EDCAC could certainly use an influx of new blood because several members have resigned for various reasons over the last year.
I just add to that comment that I invariably run into people who say that they watch our meetings on TV. If you're sitting at home spending time watching on TV, come on down here and vote. I mean, that's really the only difference. It's the only difference between what you're doing then and what you're doing now is you're clearly interested in it. If you're watching these meetings, you clearly want to know what's going on in town and, and tune into these kinds of issues. If you're spending your time at home watching it, come on down and join the discussion, conversation. And that's all I have for items of concern. If nobody has any others, that would bring us to item eight on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of February third, twenty fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve these minutes as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes as written. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of February third, twenty fifteen, as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstaining, Ms. Christensen.
Mr. Chairman, on the basis of that, I'd make a motion. We adjourn.
Seconded by... Desiree? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.